We do have a quorum. We are expecting one more of our board members this evening, but we do have a quorum to operate. So I'm going to ask everybody, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, to three, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, our next meeting is, they're going to be Tuesday, June 9th. Just a reminder for board members that we may have a sit-down session with the town board on Thursday, June 11th. We're just waiting for confirmation of that. And then our next board meeting would be Tuesday, July 11th. There are no minutes this evening to approve. We did get them, but we just haven't had a chance to get through them yet. There was a long meeting last time, so. All right, so the way the meeting runs this evening is that we start with public hearings, and we do have one public hearing that was opened last time and will be adjourned. So if anybody else wants to offer any other comment or ideas on the discussion of that first public hearing, that's great. We then have a couple new public hearings, which is the first time we're giving you or the neighbors an opportunity to comment to us on what you know about these sites and whether what the neighbors are asking for is good or bad. And then we do have a couple reviews. Actually, we have a lot of reviews, which is, for the most part, it's the first time we're seeing these applications, and it's just for the board to get an understanding of what are they asking for. And sometimes it's to help the applicant clarify what are they asking for, and then they will, any reviews, you know, will have an opportunity for public comment at a future time. They'll be noticed. As neighbors, you would get notice of that. So I am going to start this evening with item number one, and we actually do have a request from the applicant for number one to adjourn it, but we're going to, we'd have to open it anyway. So item number one is Appeal 3715, Guardian Self-Storage LLC, Frank Reddell of Guardian Self-Storage LLC, 929 Route 376, Wapengers Falls, is requesting an interpretation of the section of the code which refers to the allowed uses in a B1 Zone Schedule of Bulk Regulations. So do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Good evening, everybody. Frank Reddell for the applicant. But is correctly sent in a letter requesting a further adjournment. To give the board a little background, since our last meeting, our attorney, John Adams, has had some conversations with Mr. Clark's office. We've also supplied some documentation, too, that will office for review. Our next step is to, we wanted to arrange for a meeting with the town. We believe, we're very optimistic that some type of resolution can be reached short of asking this board to render decision. Unfortunately, the matter slipped through the cracks. Our attorney went on vacation, and he only came back Monday, so we didn't have an opportunity to set up a meeting, and that's why we sent in the request for an adjournment.
Okay, let me just understand this. So you're asking for a meeting with the town-
Yes.
-to discuss the interpretation that you're before the board for? Or you're, or to discuss something going on on your property?
To discuss the possibility of reaching a resolution that would resolve, that would resolve our request for an interpretation, yes.
Okay, and so, John, that doesn't need, that could be done outside of the zoning board?
The applicant may come in with the attorney for the town at any time, yes.
Okay. All right, that's, just want to be clear, because-
Yeah, no, no. Mr. Reddell's correct that they wanted to take time out and discuss something at our office, but we really haven't received any submissions.
I believe they went to Mr. Wood. I didn't send anything myself. It was, I received copies of items from Mr.-
Not aware of any submission.
Pardon me?
Not aware of any submission.
Okay.
Maybe what he did, he did some time ago.
Yeah.
Yes, it wasn't, it wasn't within the last week or so. It was, it was a few weeks ago.
Some time ago, he proposed, he gave a little review of the history as he knows it, and proposed some solutions. That was some time ago.
Correct. I received copies of letters that Mr. Adams did. I didn't send them out myself.
Okay, so the matter at hand for the members of the public who are here this evening is that the applicant has been looking for an interpretation of whether outside storage is allowed in a B1 business district. Specifically, you know, and again, not specific to his site, but this is a self-storage area that he's looking to store out vehicles in, as opposed to it within a building. So before we adjourn this to next month, is there anybody here who wishes to offer any comment? It's before the board looking for an interpretation of the code. All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn to our June meeting, yes.
Yes. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next time.
Thank you, we'll see you June 9th.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is a public hearing, Appeal 3718, Hamdi's, I'm sorry, I don't want to say this wrong again, Sotirius of Augustine-Hamdi, 17 Prentice Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a six-foot sideline variance for an existing above-ground pool, a 12-foot sideline variance for an existing pool deck, a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot shed, and a 12-foot sideline variance for an existing deck pursuant to Section 194-94, 194-95, 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Property is in the ownership of Rasha A. Hamdi.
Hi.
Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, just to, let me just summarize. The applicant is here before us that, on his mother's property, to address certain medical conditions, the applicant put a pool up, not within the appropriate side yard setback. The pool is for, so that his mother can get certain recreation that a doctor has encouraged her to get. The, on top of putting the pool, there is also a deck that's now been constructed around the pool, and in the house itself, also in our review, we determined that there's a little stoop area with a cover to it, I believe, that doesn't quite, well, it's a little stoop area that doesn't meet the setback variance either.
Correct.
And so we're just, we just want to clean that up while we are looking at and reviewing your request to keep this above-ground pool.
Correct.
You've explained to us that it's a very, it's a very deep lot, it backs, at the very back of it is the iconic Parkway-
Correct.
-but immediate to the house area, to the right of the pool, is extensive septic field, so it limits your ability where you could actually place that pool in the immediate backyard. There is an extensive yard behind that, but it's, the topography changes, it's wooded, it's, you know, it's got a lot of vegetation on it, so it would be-
And embedded with rock as well throughout the area.
So it would be extensive and expensive to be able to clear that area enough to be able to put a pool that would meet the appropriate setbacks.
Correct.
Plus, again, given the conditions of your mother, you wanted a pool that would be easy for somebody to be able to get to in the event that, you know, she needed assistance.
Correct.
Is there anything else you wanted to offer?
Pretty much that's the entire summary. That's the entire story. I could provide also additional documentation from the primary physician, just to reemphasize the importance of the existence of this pool in terms of-
That's fine, is it, that's for the record?
Yes.
Again, with the documentation we had before, it sounded nice, but it was not-
Right, but, um, thank you.
All right, um-
And that is-
I'm going to just, again, this is personal medical information that I really don't want to be leaving in a public file, so I'm just going to acknowledge that we've received documentation from Community Primary Care Sapash Kulkarni. I apologize if I'm not saying that right.
Kulkarni.
Within office in Hopewell Junction-
Correct.
-so it's a local office. And so, as the primary care physician of Mrs. Rasha Hamdi, I'm providing this letter to confirm certain things regarding your mother. Mrs. Hamdi was instructed, thank you, to follow low resistance exercises, especially swimming, which is found to be very effective for Mrs. Hamdi's condition, along with short daily walks and light resistance exercises. I'm leaving out certain private medical condition.
Right, I mean, I just thought, I could just reemphasize how, how serious the issue was at the time when we-
I understand. Again, we did ask the question, and I'm going to ask you to answer it on the record at this point. Why not enroll your mother in a gym with a pool? Because that would be year-round her ability to get into a pool.
Just because the type of person she is, it's, it's very difficult, I mean, even, even in front of us, she doesn't even like to be in the pool in front of us. The type of person, extremely, extremely-
Private?
Shy, and also very self-conscious about the, you know, herself and the conditions, I guess. So that's one of the reasons to make it in the privacy of her own home. We thought it would be the best approach to do so.
Okay, and what's the size of the pool? There's going to be certain questions I'm going to ask you, just to get information on the record for the public hearing.
15 by 30. 15 by 30.
Okay. Is there a smaller pool that could be going in place and still?
I just thought that that size pool at the time, when I, I personally tried to test it to see, I mean, I'm not a swimmer, I mean, I do swim, but I, I don't like swimming. But at the time, when I was testing the actual pool to see what type of exercises would be the best for her, especially when you push yourself against the wall of the pool, what would be the best length of that pool to get the best exercise. I did test the 24 feet and this one. By the time you push yourself off the wall, a five-foot person or five-foot, six-person, you're already midway in that pool, so you don't get that extensive workout that you really need for weight control. So I just thought that the 30-foot length would have been, it was the best decision I thought it would be.
Okay, the length is less worrisome, because the length is actually in compliance, it's the width.
Right, at the time, we were looking for them, they did 12 by 24, 15 by 30, so, and then they did 18 by 42. So those were the-
That's the standard size.
Correct, at the time. Now, I think they make, I think, I'm not sure, but at the time when we were selecting those, we did select the middle size, just because of the feel that it would be the best effect for her.
Yeah, that's right. All right, I'm going to actually ask board members to give this documentation back to you.
Okay.
All right, just because we don't want somebody's personal medical condition in our files. All right, and so, the important piece of this is that you're coming to the board after the fact. You constructed the pool, you constructed the deck, but you did so without permits. And so, that is certainly a concern. We are also concerned that there has been no inspection on the pool, no, particularly no electrical inspection.
And in this documentation, I did actually, did a quote from an electrician, just, I can completely expedite the process, because I know you had a concern about that last time. I know, I know you did not give me direction, directive order not to have her use the pool, it was an advice. But I did get a quote from an electrician, "I can expedite the process if the building department would allow me to do so before the permit."
We can't, we're, you're subject right now to a public hearing. We have to hear from your neighbors whether they have any concerns about the pool even staying where it is. All right, that's why we're here this evening.
And if, if, if we do agree on it, I would, I would definitely, like I said, I do have the quotes from an electrician. I can expedite that process. I will comply with the inspector, whatever he asks for, I will be willing to do so. Also, I did all the calculations when it came to the, to the design of the pool myself, and I also consulted with my brother, who is a licensed structural engineer in the states of Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey, actually, at the time. So I am 100% confident on the design, but I will most definitely comply with whatever the inspector asked for.
Okay, so, any questions or comments from board members? I don't have it. Thinking we, let's get the public comment going here and let me generate some additional questions. All right, so is there anyone here to speak for or against the application from Mr. Hamdi at 17 Prentice Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a six-foot sideline variance for an existing above-ground pool, a 12-foot sideline variance for an existing pool deck, a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot shed? He actually didn't mention that, let's look. And a 12-foot sideline variance for an existing deck pursuant to section, to various sections of the code. There is a, we didn't discuss with Mr. Hamdi, that there is a shed at the top of the driveway, essentially pushed just a little bit further back, and that, given the other conditions of your yard, again, the septic system and the size of the shed, that it would be difficult for you to place that shed anywhere else.
Correct, and it's the closest to the last part, and at the time when it was bought from the gentleman, he pointed to us, to us, that he can, we cannot place that weight on a, on a septic field. Also, he pointed out to us that he cannot drive his truck on the field itself, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
My name is Ron Nazaro. Mr. Hamdi's closest neighbor, his pool is closest to my property line relevant.
Okay, all right, good.
I'm at 15 Prentice Drive. Where his pool is, is not, doesn't obstruct my view of the world, it's, I'm, I'm okay with it if-
Okay.
-if you guys need my okay on it, I'm good.
Okay. I appreciate that. Before you sit down, can we ask, anybody who wants to speak tonight, can we ask you to sign in, just so that we have your name correct for the record? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
It's easier for me to move.
Oh, you can, you can speak first, well, and then just sign afterwards, that's fine.
You sign in first?
It, we just want to make sure we get your name in line, so if you want to speak, you're welcome to. Paul Bryan.
Good evening. My name is Paul Presavento. I live across the street from Mr. Hamdi. I'd like to give you just a synopsis of maybe some history of the street in terms of the building, of some of the houses there. I've been here for 46 years, so we're like the seventh house on the street. There are currently 27 houses on the street. The road runs north and south. The west side of the high, west side of the street, for some crazy reason, has a, a rock ledge in the, in the, in the property. Approximately three or four houses that are in the same line as Mr. Hamdi's house have had problems with septic systems in putting them in. One gentleman had a blast for a pool he put in the ground. Up the street a little bit, what happened was a, because of the outcrop of the, of the, not the outcrop, but because of the ledge, the guy shifted the house in such a manner that he was a foot over on the, on the property. So what happened was, is that when he found out that that was the, the problem, they had to come through here, get a variance, and also, he had to purchase the property from the, from the neighbor in order to accommodate the building. Okay? My, my problem here is the fact that, excuse me, is that he's asking for a variance for the pool.
Mm-hmm.
The pool has a lot of nice designs to it. It's not obtrusive, all right? It looks good when you drive down the street. The situation is, is that I think, and also, none of us in this room would not go out and seek help for a loved one, a parent, or a child in order to satisfy their needs. So if it's a health and welfare condition, I have a little bit of difficulty denying those types of situations. And the other thing was, the house was not torn down in order to give the variance for the, for the cover as far as the property line is concerned. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them, but that's my feeling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. If you don't mind, if you could sign in. Mary, can you tell me what the next name on there is? Or Paul, if you can read the next name for me?
Can't, I cannot.
The gentleman who signed, I think, red shirt, did you sign?
J H.
Oh, okay, all right. J H. I have no idea.
Okay, he's here for number six, he said.
Oh. Anybody else for this one?
Number six.
Heather? Number six? Is there anybody else here for this appeal?
Second bakery.
Seeing none? Close and reserve, John?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close and reserve the decision of the board? Someone? Jim, do you second?
Yeah, I'm caught thinking.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so Mr. Hamdi, we'll, we have 62 days to render a decision. We will try to do it next week, next month. We may need to have some discussion amongst the board members. You're welcome to be here, it's a public meeting when we do that. But, yeah, we'll, we have 62 days to get you your decision, okay? And thank you for those who did come out to speak related to his appeal. All right, item number three is Appeal 3723, Woolley, Kelly Woolley, 47 Cherry Lane, Stormville, is requesting a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing 10-foot by 16-foot shed, and an 11-foot sideline and 32-foot wheel line variance for an existing 18-foot by 20-foot garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hello.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, when we, last month, we've reviewed your application with you, just so the board could understand what you were looking for. You mentioned to us that you had some antique cars that you wished to keep in the garage in the back, that the garage was constructed. We also talked about the fact that you had a shed along the side of the property-
Taken down.
-and then there's a dirt road to get back to the garage there, so there really was no place to be able to move the shed. Since our meeting, though, it has come to our attention, are you familiar with Kelly Woolley? Are you running a business out of this property?
No.
Okay, can you explain-
He has a tree business, so his personal pickup has a rack on the tailgate.
There's an advertisement for D&amp;G Tree Service?
On the back of his pickup?
No, but it's being advertised in publications?
Oh, yes.
With your address, 47 Cherry Lane.
But that's not where he parks his truck.
Okay, so you're telling me there's no machines there? There's no-
There's a buckcat.
Only one I work on.
Only what?
Only one I need to fix on, I bring him home and fix it. But I don't keep my equipment there.
No. Right now, it's there because he got rid of a shed and a hot tub.
I brought it home to crush.
Are there excessive piles of wood chips on your property?
I have a pile of wood chip all the way around the back.
As a burn.
As a burn.
Okay, are you at all concerned about the combustibility of those wood chips?
It's not that many. It's not like that.
It's not that many? Oh, my gosh.
No.
Um, board members, I call your attention to the packet that we received of pictures from the town's visit to the property.
I mean, I'm using that as privacy. If you want that knocked down, I'll have him haul it out of there. That's not a problem.
All right, we did talk about the fact that you were removing-
It's gone, the shed and the hot tub.
That's gone, okay, that's good. You also have tanks, multiple tanks on your property?
I have one fuel tank for the garage for the heat, and the other ones for when I do jobs. I put it in my truck and I bring it to the job site.
The metal?
Huh?
There's metal ones.
Yeah, there are, there's multiple tanks.
There's one right outside the garage, garage side-
Okay.
...which goes to the furnace. It's empty. I mean, when it, when he needs it, he fills it up. And then he has one that he moves from job sites.
It goes in the back of my pickup.
How big are these tanks?
Excuse me?
How big are the tanks?
275, 475 gallon.
And so you lift, you physically lift those and put them in your-
It's with an escalator.
Put it back in my truck.
With an escalator that's not on your property?
He brings it down.
Not on my property.
He brings it down there.
So how-
Somebody could walk away with that where his trucks are parked. That's why they don't leave it there. He parks where there's other commercial trucks.
Okay, so where do you, where do you park your vehicles, your, in your business-related equipment?
It's not in the road.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Loving to the road.
Right next to Pine Bush on Georgie Harton's property, and also Fred Adams, where he's been parking some stuff locked up, which is right there on Pine Bush.
Do you have the pictures?
Yeah. It's hard to tell from the pictures, but, uh, because is there a slope there?
Do you want to see them in color? That might help you.
The piles of wood chips run all down the side of your property and all the way around. It goes across the back and a third or a quarter of the way up.
I was going to plant trees on it. Once it rotted down a little bit, I was going to plant pine trees across the top, but I wanted a little burn, so we could see.
It's rock wall right there, so like, you can't just-
I guess, as a neighbor, I would be concerned about termites. I'd be concerned about what's in those chips, aside from combustibility, right.
Yeah, problem not so long on these, so, well-
Right, with the stump dump.
Well, and also people getting festival, cockroaches and that.
Right. So, there is a-
Wasn't wood chips, it was stumps and everything like that.
No, not, there's no stump.
No, I'm explaining the other problem, was not wood chips, it was stumps and that kind of stuff, where they had the road problems. I don't know if wood chips would attract them as well or not, but.
All right, um, and another question for board members, I guess we have to listen to comments from the neighbors. No?
What are, what are, there's other containers near the shed, what's stored in those? It's outside?
There's a tent, a small tent up there. It has heaters in it. It has a 120 snowmobile in it, a little kid's quad in it.
Well, the one bucket in the picture says hydraulic oil.
Yeah, the buckets-
Five gallon bucket.
Yeah. It's all cleaned up, because he got rid of it at the, well, the recycle at Pine Bush? Not Pine Bush, Fred Adams' place, where they recycle it.
Okay. And is that, is there another?
I have a picture of it all cleaned up, if that would make it better.
Oh, it helps, sure.
What about the pallets and the tires?
The pallets I used for the firewood.
I heat mainly.
And when you say it was cleaned up, when are you saying it was, when was it cleaned up?
This weekend.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's the hotel area. That's the garage. This doesn't help my, my paint was running out.
Hmm, okay.
And that's where the shed was.
So like, here, with the five-gallon tanks?
That's a water bucket. It's all cleaned up, it's all done.
Yeah, but this is, what's, what about here on the, along the side?
A garbage can?
Yeah.
Which is still there. And now, actually-
This and these items?
Yep. This is gone, that's still there. That's going to go to the metal.
What is that?
It's an old wood stove in my house. Why? Yeah, that, that's one, that's the one that he moves from job site.
And there's a battery, car battery here on-
Mm-hmm.
But this looks like it's, like, tucked in the ground.
No, it's not. You can actually, it's on legs. It's just, it's been sitting there, you know, probably everywhere.
Okay. And is this another, where's this picture from?
That one looks like the one on the side here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That one's the one that heats the garage.
That's a proper thing. But this is where the pallets are.
Yeah, I can't have pallets. No. Not outdoors on the property.
So everybody who stacks wood and the pallets on the property?
I mean, I could, I could not, not a-
I mean, I could, I could not, not a, a pile of wood.
Right, as one thing.
You have a stack of pallets.
Right.
That's not allowed.
Okay, how many am I allowed? Because, I mean...
We can ask you to go back to the microphone just so that your, your...
I mean, you can't even tell.
Yeah, that's fine.
You're saying the pallets are, is firewood?
Well, no, 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 I stacked...
We put them on the ground, stack firewood on top.
And right now, they're stacked up 'cause the firewood's been used up.
Oh, so use it to keep the firewood dry?
Off the ground.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's okay.
Yeah.
As long as they're used. It's, we just saw them as a stack of pallets.
And the funny news, if you went to my house today, there's three of them with firewood started on them already, as his guys dropped off firewood to me.
Okay. And there's no firewood business being operated from this home?
No, that's on another yard off of 52.
Okay.
That's a wood yard we have, but we don't, we don't do.
What about the tires? Have they been removed from the property?
They're to his truck, his regular personal truck.
Why aren't they on the truck?
'Cause...
I have a shepherder winner and a shepherd is on the truck.
Can you put them inside a garage because they're not supposed to be stored outdoors either?
Okay.
Well, you're asking for a garage that already exists, so I understand that. I just didn't, I mean, I could go through my whole neighborhood and find things wrong with other people.
I don't doubt that, but the dilemma is that you're here asking for something that's really not in compliance with code.
Okay.
And so while we're here, we have the obligation to make sure that anything else that's on the property is not...
I mean, I don't know who went to my house, but they can see. I take great pride in keeping my house clean, nice. I redid the, had the rock wall redone when we moved in. I painted it. I've actually had the whole lawn scraped because of rodents when we moved there. I mean, I know you guys are concerned about termites, but if there was a concern, I think I would take care of it because that's just how I am.
I think the greatest concern, probably the fuel tanks and the containment, that's a problem.
I mean, he could move that right to his yard. It's just, it's something somebody could walk away with.
Well, I sort of wondered why you say that. If you're throwing it out by Pine Bush, they lock those gates. They have gates there. Nobody's going in and out after hours.
And on the other side is Georgie's property? There's no gates there?
On the other side, from Pine Bush, you're not going through the gates?
I'll move the tanks.
Which is, any place you put them, there should be some sort of containment in case there's a leak or something, you drop it or whatever, you know, an accident. EPA finds out, and then you have real headaches.
Right, they're both empty.
Yeah. Well, they're not always...
We do.
Otherwise, you're not putting fuel in your equipment. I'm just expressing concern that...
So you just want those, do you want that one removed? 'Cause the other one goes to a heater in the garage.
Well, yeah, I don't even know whether that's supposed to have a containment under it for your heating oil. I don't know what they require for the houses, but, yeah, you should probably look at that.
They should have, if it's outside, it should have bollards around it for protection, if it's anywhere near a car to get to it.
Right.
But if it's for their home heating, you're allowed 660 gallons per property.
Okay.
For home heating.
So you gotta get rid of the...
Well, I guess, I mean, I'm not sure. I didn't know the answer to that, but for the other equipment, it's gotta have appropriate storage of any fuel oil and stuff, wherever you put it.
Just for the record, is this Mr. Woolley?
Yes.
Okay, just me, just want to be clear that, that he's being identified as a part of the property. Okay, um, so, so there is no, there is no business being operated out of here. There's no equipment that is being stored here that is related to...
The business.
Of the business. Um, the tanks, you're gonna remove the extra tanks. You've already taken down the shed.
The portable, I'm calling it portable.
Yeah. But the other... The one tank for the heating fuel...
Okay, okay.
Is what it is. However, like, the zoning administrator has said, it should have bollards or some protection around it if it's anywhere near a parking area or anywhere where people might have an opportunity to back into it or something like that.
Does it need an pad?
For its own...
It should, it should.
It should be on a pad, right?
It should be on a pad, yes.
Yeah, you don't want to...
So if it's, if it's leaky or something, it's not getting into water or anything like that?
Doesn't get into the ground anyway, it gets stopped right there.
Is there a reason why you're advertising your address? Are customers coming there?
No, it's a tree business. They would call up.
I understand, but why put your address in?
Because that's where they mail us, and we mail back and forth. That's where the, you know, it's, he rents down, there's a mailbox down off of Ludingtonville where he has his trucks.
Okay.
His uncle, is Fred Adams, who said, "You could lock up your trucks here" because they got a few more people going in and out of that until it gets more secure next to it. It's right next door. And, you know, it's not like our mailing address. It's not like there's an office. Nobody meets us. We, he goes to the jobs and sees the people for tree estimate.
That's what I expected, but I figure why there's an address?
No, that's just for my mail.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for board members?
Don't think so.
So is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Kelly Woolley, 47 Cherry Lane, Stormville, requesting a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing 10-foot by 16-foot shed and a 11-foot sideline and 32-foot real line variance for an existing 18-foot by 20-foot garage? Come on up. Mary, put number six next to those names that are there so we'll know, so Lisa will know for the minutes. And then if you don't mind, put a number three there so that we'll know. Okay. Are you all together? Are you, go ahead.
We're 581 Meacham Road.
Okay.
We're back-to-back.
Okay.
Yeah, he's one in the back, and he's 580...
The Harvardians?
587.
Get the name in.
As far as issue one, as far as the trucks are concerned.
Right.
Every weekend, we're all, they show up in town, every weekend, the trucks, bulldozers, everything parked in the back.
Okay.
He created a mound of chips that you can't see. Five, 10, 15, 20 foot. Excuse, can I drop more?
Yeah, that's fine.
And this is current.
Thank you.
Every morning, in the winter, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, he starts all the diesels up and runs it for 10, 15 minutes. You can't stay in a bedroom. You get all the diesel fuels. It's unbelievable. I can't talk right now.
Is this just a diesel pickup truck, or is this a...
No.
Backhoe and excavator?
Bulldozer's everything.
Okay.
He lines them up. You can't see him because he's got these mounds that I showed you. Mounds of chips all over the place. It's a disgrace.
So what's happening now is when it rains, they're actually coming into my property and my neighbor's property because the wall is so high, and we have so many bugs because of it in the backyard. And it's just all night and all day, all, you can't get any peace and quiet. It's just excavating and just, it's unbelievable, the noise that he makes.
Especially on the weekends and over holidays where there's nobody around. That's when he works. Gets all the equipment and buries everybody. There's no reason for living like this.
I understand.
I've been here since the 50s, and I gotta put up with this. It's ridiculous. A disgrace, a disgrace to do that to your neighbors. You see, we're buried, we're buried over there.
We see the piles of wood chips, no question.
There's snakes and everything else there, rattlers. I already had a guy to get rid of the rattlers. They come out as wood chips. My shed in the back, which, I'm under the grandfather's clothes, their claws, that shed was put up about 50 years ago.
Okay.
Or 40 years ago. There's nothing new, but his is all new. And he's got, he says cars, good cars. He's got baloney in there. That's what he's got. It's just a business, and he is running a business from there.
Okay.
Well, he said he was fixing equipment. You're saying he's running...
What, he's fixing?
Fixing equipment there. Is he running one piece at a time as he's working on it? Or he's running three or four to...
On occasion, he'll have something there and he does repair it. A big, big equipment, not junk, not a little car or nothing like that. He's got that too. Racing cars and motorcycles, that's different. But I'm talking about the big equipment. Once in a while, when he has trouble, he does pull it there and services it, to a degree, just to a degree.
Well, I'm trying to clarify something.
Pardon me, yes?
When you first started speaking, I thought you were saying he'd be running three or four pieces of diesel-powered equipment at a time?
In the morning.
Okay. That's just, in the winter, every morning, they...
Just about.
Just to run them, keep the batteries charged or whatever?
No, he's gotta get them going. You can't drive a diesel when it's cold.
Okay.
It's gotta be heated up.
It's starting to... Oh, but I'm still trying to figure this out. If the...
A diesel has to be heated up.
I, you don't have to explain that to me.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out why he would be starting it. If he's gonna have an excavator or whatever, and it's already on a trailer, you don't need to start that. You would just get in your truck and leave.
They're not on the trailer. They're on the property. They're on the property. They don't on trailers.
So he's starting them up to put them on the trailer the next one?
Yes. Or then he just drives them out to the road and puts them on out in the road.
So he's storing them there?
Yes.
We have a video of him...
That day, he started...
Yeah, we have, I have a couple of videos of him running these things, working, making, cutting down trees, and just making the pile bigger and bigger.
Cutting trees on his own?
Till about 7, 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night. You know, it's...
Cutting trees on his own property to remove them?
Is he cutting trees? Did he bring trees to the property to cut down?
Yes. All the trees, all the trees from the jobs, he dumps theirs. Instead of paying to dump, he dumps on the property, back to the property.
So all the, yeah, they're all coming into both of our properties now, so it's...
Plus bugs and everything else. Mice, you name it, everything back there.
Just all staying on like, do you want us to...
And the smell of that diesel, it'll kill you. My bedroom's right there. You can't even use the tech in the back anymore. You gotta go in the afternoon when he's working, 'cause at night, the same thing happens. When it gets dark, everything comes out.
Comes out and coming back?
He starts doing his work.
No, you lost me again then. After dark, it comes out. You mean he's returning back with the equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's parking them, a lot of it, not all the time. On weekends, definitely, every holiday. During the regular weekdays, I guess they're on a job, and he doesn't put them all there.
When was the last time you, when was the last time you saw the equipment on his property?
Day before yesterday.
Sunday.
And he was doing it at night too. Sunday night, he was out there, or Saturday and Sunday night, he's out there taking all the wood chips that he dumped and making them bigger piles. He's going up another two, three, four foot every weekends, and it's unbelievable the amount.
How high do you think it is?
Pardon me?
How high do you think the chips are?
I showed you the pictures.
But sir, it's hard to see height from a picture.
I'd say about 15, about 15 foot, 20 foot.
Okay.
Remember, he's got the high miles and he's got a...
There was a dip in the park over there?
No, he made it so he's got a runway for his trucks to go around, and he brings them up so you can't see the trucks that are hidden down in that area. It's like, he built like a cave, so to speak.
So he's trying to hide his equipment?
Right, exactly what's, what he's doing. Not trying, he's doing it.
Well, he didn't do it, wasn't successful hiding it from you.
Yeah, so anybody else didn't enable it.
Okay.
The thing is that...
Yeah, because when I look at the pictures, it's not clear to me whether some of that slope is due to the natural geography of the land.
No, that was all level ground at one time for the back. He built all the chips and dumped it and dumped dirt, and he's building that mound. No, he's elevated his, his property many feet because of that.
Okay.
It was never like that. There was, there's a brick wall, as you could see, a stone wall. That's the level of the property at one time. No more. The stone wall doesn't mean anything.
Okay, yeah, I noticed that one, the big picture.
Yeah. All right. Any else?
That's it.
Thank you. Can I ask for you or somebody to sign in for all four of you, please?
They did.
Okay, oh, thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else?
He didn't speak, so he doesn't need to sign in.
Thank you. Can we keep these pictures for the record?
Yes.
Can we keep these pictures for the file?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna send them down to the clerk so she puts them in her file. No, you're, you're, thank you. We appreciate you coming out tonight.
I hope you keep some of that.
Okay, thank you. Seeing nobody else, um, I think I'm gonna suggest we close and reserve.
I understand, they wanted to respond. At one point, she had her hand up.
And I also want to say, one of those pictures showed a canopy structure, which is not permitted.
Okay.
Canopy-covered garages are not permitted in the...
Oh, one of the pictures they gave us?
Oh, one, no, one of the pictures that, that was part of the package.
Oh, okay.
There's no business running out of there.
Come on up to the microphone, please, first.
Yes, Sunday was the day that we finished cleaning up the shed that we had taken down, which probably took down two weeks ago. We crushed it.
Okay.
He crushed it. So, yes, Sunday there was a machine. They're lying about every day in the mornings, starting up trucks, 'cause we have two...
I'm in, like, 9:00 at night. I don't go out and start anything.
But Sunday, Sunday was Mother's Day. We didn't get in until 9:00. So I will admit to that, that there was no machines running every morning in the winter.
I don't, there's no equipment there.
Okay.
And if they take the running a business out of there, they could go visit the two yards. Now, the wood chips are maybe six foot high on one side. They're not 20 feet high. I invite anybody to come down there. The signs there, measure them. Maybe from their side, they're looking at 20 feet high. I keep it very...
Their house is lower than ours.
Okay, but at what point is, what are you gonna do with all these wood chips?
Well, it was just to make it like a, a...
I basically put it there so they didn't have to look at my stuff. You know? And then I was gonna plant...
And it's not like tiles. It's done with a bar. It's...
It's wood chip. People use them in their flower beds all the time. People use them in their flower beds all the time.
Understood. Three inches or four inches, not six feet.
I'll take it down, I'll have them take it down. They can look at everything. If that's how they wanna be. But I will tell you, yes, we do go out on motorcycles and they all have mufflers.
That's gonna happen. You're riding motorcycles on your property?
When we leave?
We park them in the garage? Oh, okay, all right.
They're road bikes.
But, what?
They're road motorcycles.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. They're not motorcycles that you were driving around on your property?
You're not doing any social distancing.
No, I mean, oh, he can.
No, no, you can't. Okay, um, anyone else?
No, I just, he's saying we're running a business and we're not. I mean, we have two yards, one's on fifty-two and one's off of running to the road.
Okay. We hear you. We appreciate the clarification. Now, do I come back next? Um, well, let the...
I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, was, were there any other further comments from neighbors or no? No? Okay. Are we set to go, is that okay? Um, if I have a motion from the board to close and reserve?
You finished down there? Do you have a question?
No, I'm good.
What about the canopy structure is not...
Oh, I'm sorry, there's a canopy structure on your property now? A little portable tent, it's been there. We are, I mean, what?
It's way next to the garage, it's a tent.
It's movable. It's a structure. It requires something on the ground to hold it up, right? So it's a structure.
It's a tent.
Yeah, but it's...
Eight by ten?
I'm guessing at the size, it's small. But it's not within the setbacks. If you wanna put it closer to your pool...
Well, it says, it says right in the code, the canopy covered structures are not detached, garages are not allowed to be canvas covered.
Oh, it's one of those.
It's not a reply, no.
Like a canopy, you know, for patio equipment or something.
Well, those, see, they don't get permits for them, they're only allowed there six months.
For outdoor use associated with the pool or something, the patio equipment, something like that. Okay, so the canvas structure next to the garage...
How big is it?
Eight by ten and twelve. I think we paid one ninety-nine, a little...
And what's, what is it for, though? What's it?
I saw, we had the little snowmobile, the little quad.
Our patio furniture we put in there in the wintertime?
It's kinda like a...
Yeah, it sells.
They have a quad, it should be...
But it's a little quad. But you have a shed and now you have this garage, so...
Yeah, that ain't enough. That ain't enough.
If it has...
Doesn't matter what's like...
Well...
It matters.
If you're putting up another structure, then you need a...
That was there, though, when they're storing motor vehicles in it, it matters.
It's not big enough for that.
It wouldn't even fit. You just said snowmobiles.
It's a kid, a one funny, a small one.
Still has gasoline in its vehicle and it could...
So that means like a lawnmower can be in there?
Technically...
Well, we'll just keep everything out in the front yard.
Okay, I'll just park everything right up against that wood chip. You are, you, keep in mind you're before the board asking for...
I know, but it's like...
I try to make it look nice and neat and it's not working yet.
Well, you could, you could put up another shed or you could put that up if you get a permit, that's all.
But we can't get permits for canvas covered structures. They're only allowed to be there temporarily.
Can we move it along the property, as long as it's on the setbacks? Um, you're not gonna ask us, how do you manipulate? No, no, I mean, is that what I'm...
Now you're asking for, you're asking for interpretation.
For six months, can I move it off the property line and still keep it there? Exactly, it's still on the property, so don't, please, don't ask us.
And you're asking for another interpretation, which is not before us.
Oh, that's not what I meant, though. I meant, is that what I need to do? Is move it?
I can't answer that question.
Speak with the building department.
If you're gonna put up structures to house stuff, you have to meet the requirements for the building code.
Right.
So this one, you don't have a permit and I'm getting the impression that they don't give permits for this kinda structure.
Right.
So you have to speak with them and find out what they allow, okay?
Okay.
If it's not allowed, you can't have it, so as part of our decision, if, if it's granted, we're gonna, I think in a minute, close the hearing, the reserve decision, um, you gotta have that gone.
The, the tent?
Can't structure, yeah?
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm. Anything else? No. Do I have a motion to close and reserve decision?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so again, what I said last time, we have sixty-two days to issue a decision. Generally, we try to get to the math at the very next meeting. I'm not sure whether we'll be ready or not, because we have a lot of stuff on our agenda tonight, um, but, you know, we'll get to it within... So I come next June ninth? You don't have to be here. Um, you'll get the decision within five days after the board meeting, in the mail, anyway, but you're, you're welcome to come. You'll not be obligated to speak.
Okay, just do, you know, try to sort of...
No, that's fine, okay? And we're done tonight? You are finished for this evening, yes. And thank you for the neighbors, um, for coming out this evening. All right, item number four is Appeal 3724 Curtis, Tim Curtis, 203 Robinson Lane, Wapgers Falls, is requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment and a one-foot sideline variance for an existing shed pursuant to Sections 194-95 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening. All right, so we did meet with you last month and get it, just got a simple overview of what you were looking for. You recently put in a pool.
Yes.
Well, not recently, it was actually two thousand thirteen, so it's been there about
a year and a half.
Yeah, so you really had one season, really, of using it.
Yeah, about that.
Um, and so it, it came to everyone's attention that where the pool equipment was installed was not appropriate. Pool equipment must still also meet the setbacks that's required for the pool. Um, and so your pool equipment is closer to your side yard than it should be. Um, we talked about how loud it is, you assured us that it's new equipment and it's not loud.
It's silent, you can't hear it.
We talked about that if necessary, you would be willing to put some screening around it, if, you know, if that would help, right? If necessary.
I brought pictures so you could actually see what it all looks like now.
Okay.
So hopefully that'll help.
That's fine, if you can, if you can show them to us, that would be helpful.
These are the views from my neighbor's lot, close this one. Jim, do you wanna see that?
Let me see.
Okay.
Okay.
This one is what the, the view from the property line looks like.
So the pool equipment is in the fence?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I can't see that. Okay.
And how close is the fence to the property line?
Um, it's on, I think it was like fifteen and a half.
Okay, so if, again, if necessary, you could put some screening on the outside of the fence.
Only, I would do it if required, but the reason I don't wanna do that, let me show you this picture.
Uh-huh.
Okay, this is the view from my deck.
Okay.
All right, you can see that I have beautiful view of the lake on this side.
Um, okay, all right, and so it would obstruct your view.
Exactly, so that's why I would rather not put anything to obstruct my view.
I hear you. I mean, we could put a, if we needed to, again, for sound absorption or something, we could put some low shrubs there.
Right.
Azaleas or something like that.
It's so quiet, you can't hear it. I mean, I can hear my compressor from my central air over the pool with the noise, I can't hear it.
Well, I just, we just, we wanna, again, part of the public hearing is to make sure your neighbors are not hearing it, so...
Understood.
Okay?
So those are, I mean, do you wanna see them?
No, that's okay, I think we got the gist of it. Thank you for providing the pictures for us. Questions from board members? If not, is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Mr. Tim Curtis, 203 Robinson Lane, requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment and a one-foot sideline variance for an existing shed? We should, Mr. Curtis, we should just mention into the record the shed. Um, how long the shed's been there?
Two thousand five, November.
Okay.
It does have an approved CO. And the, the neighbor on that side is Mr. Hutchinson, right here.
Okay, and again, the size of the shed, it's difficult to, it would be difficult to move it at this point and it's only...
Yes, yep, twelve foot by twenty, it's pretty big.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Eric Hutchinson and I live on the side of the property that the shed borders.
Okay.
Um, I have absolutely no problem with the position of the shed. It doesn't appear to be too close to the property line, I think we're talking about one foot, so...
Yeah, less than a foot, really.
It's very minimal. And as Tim stated earlier about the filter, it is extremely quiet. I know pool motors and it's very, very quiet.
Okay.
You have to be within ten feet of the motor to hear anything.
Okay.
So that's my comments. It's no problem from my vantage point with aesthetically or noise or anything like that, so we're fine. So I'm in favor of any, um, you know, promotion of the deed and all that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I'm Linda Hassett, I live at 203 Robinson Lane on the side...
So you're on the other side?
On the side where the pool is. So, uh, I wanna make sure I understand the issue.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, are we just talking about the part of the pool that makes noise that's not up to code? Or is it the entire fence and the pool that's too close?
Well, the fence is okay, the pool is okay, it's just where his pool equipment is located.
I see.
All the way in the back.
Okay.
Would you like to see this, this survey of the property to see what we're talking about?
Sure.
Come on up real quick. All right, his pool is fine, his fence is fine, but because the pool equipment doesn't meet the same twenty-five foot setback, the pool equipment is what we're there for the variance for. And then the shed on this side is one foot too close to the property line.
Got it.
Okay?
All right, well, I'm not a fan of the pool, only just because I've spent a lot of money in my backyard doing a lot of landscaping, I have a gorgeous view. And when I look over at my neighbor's yard, I want them to have a pool and be happy, but I see cement and iron bars, which I'm not that thrilled about.
Okay.
Um, so from what you're telling me is that he's certainly within his right to have that and if I want to not look at it, I guess that's my...
Yeah, if the fence is not an issue here...
My problem to solve.
It's only whether the pool equipment itself, that, well, one or two pieces of, you know, that come out of the ground, is that, whether that's an issue.
Yeah, so it's not particularly attractive. I think some landscaping around it would make it look nicer. I don't, you know, the noise is quiet, I would agree.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate you coming out this evening, thank you. Anybody else?
Just one question.
Four.
For the last speaker, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Linda, when you say some landscaping, are you referring just to the equipment or you would like something done around the whole pool itself?
Well, I didn't think that...
We're not here for the whole thing.
Yes, I'm asking, that's why I'm trying to narrow it down.
What I understood was that was the only part that I really could request, so that's what I was...
So you would like something done around the equipment itself?
Yeah.
And again, is it just because you don't wanna see the physical pool equipment or... 'Cause you, you did comment, it was quiet.
It's ugly. It was my pool equipment.
Okay. All right.
Seems reasonable.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
So, Mr. Curtis, um, is it possible that you could put a couple low bushes around it?
If that's what it takes to get my seat on, yes, I will.
Okay. So that being said...
I'll read this.
Uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, just wanna make a note on this. A motion to close?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me, I think we just need to put the, the landscaping around the pool?
Yes, please.
Put it as, whereas the applicant has agreed to do that? So, I'm just gonna add in, as applicant has agreed to put landscaping such as low-level bushes near the pool equipment to conceal the equipment from the view of his neighbors?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. In reference to Appeal 3724 by applicant Tim Curtis, seeking an eight-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment and a one-foot sideline variance for an existing shed pursuant to Sections 194-95 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, with the location of 203 Robinson Lane, Wapgers Falls, identified as tax back number 6358-02-901786, and a resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for said eight-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment and the one-foot sideline variance for an existing shed pursuant to Sections 194-195 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type-two action under Secor and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on April twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals has held the public hearing on May twelfth, two thousand fifteen, and whereas the applicant has agreed to put landscaping such as low-level bushes near the pool equipment to conceal said equipment from the view of his neighbors, and therefore whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to community subject to the agreed landscaping, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means without greater expense, whereas the requested variance is not substantial, and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request by Tim Curtis, 203 Robinson Lane, Wapgers Falls, for an eight-foot sideline variance for existing pool equipment and a one-foot sidelines variance for an existing shed pursuant to Sections 194-95 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the enforced condition of landscaping, and be it further resolved that the, within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
So votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries, okay? Jim, if you don't mind, I'm gonna take your copy together with what I had with about what you said.
See, I think I have mine.
Pam should, and Lisa should have what they need.
Sorry.
All right, thank you. All right, item number five, Appeal 3727, Maranucci, Justin and Inez Maranucci of Four Chestnut Street, Hopple Junction, are requesting a twenty-four-foot rear line and nine-foot sideline variance for a proposed nineteen-foot by seven-foot jungle gym pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, we did have an opportunity to review with you last month what you were looking for. Um, you are living in the Four Corners Development.
Uh, yeah, the newest one, the enclave, that's on the other side.
Right, and so these were lots that were specifically designed to be smaller lots, um, and so really anywhere on your property that you were to put this equipment would probably be subject to needing a variance.
Correct.
Um, in our discussion with you, you agreed that there was not gonna be any bright slides, no bright canopies.
None of it.
Um, anything, any play equipment that's not natural color is gonna be green.
Correct.
Right? Um, and I think that's pretty much, anything else you wanna add?
No, that's, that's it. It was a plea by the HOA and that's where we stand, this is the final, final step.
Okay. Um, any comments or questions from board members? No? So is there anyone here to speak and I, um, well, is there anybody here to speak for or against the request from Justin and Inez Maranucci, Four Chestnut Street, Hopple Junction, requesting a twenty-four-foot rear line and nine-foot sideline variance for a proposed nineteen-foot by seven-foot jungle gym? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. What do we need?
Did I open this public hearing? I didn't write down that I did.
Did she open the public hearing?
No. We gotta back up. We gotta do this legally. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, so moved in reference to Appeal 3727.
Thank you. And second, all in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye. And I hear that, I moved it all prior comments, you mean, a part of this, of this hearing?
Thank you, oh my God, I usually write notes onto myself, so I keep track of this, but, all right, um...
I think everything's on the, on the record, so I just wanna make sure there's...
Okay, we did actually get a letter from a concerned homeowner that we should all be aware of. It's dated May fifth. Um, I would like to bring a few things to the attention of the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding the above-mentioned appeal. The back end of this lot is exposed to all homes on Chestnut Street, which is a semicircle design street. All homeowners on Mr. Maranucci's side of the street can see into all of the others' backyards, except for the two corner lots on Chestnut Street, which back up to the forested area and this forested area cannot be touched. It is my understanding that the forested area is owned by the HOA. Mr. Maranucci's lot does not back up to the forested area. The lot behind Mr. Maranucci that runs the full length of his back property line is now currently under contract and the new homeowners can remove the few trees that are there at any time. The jungle gym, if placed where Mr. Mar, if where the Maranuccis want it, can be seen from Chestnut as well as from Holly Crescent and Persimmon Place. Placing it within the existing code will position it behind the house and will diminish its, its presence, I believe they meant to write, as it is pulled away from the fence. How does he service the fence and jungle gym if he gets the variance? If the jungle gym is positioned where he wants it, it would be approximately five feet from the fence. The jungle gym will be sticking upward and approximately five to six feet above the top of the fence. Now, if you do not grant him the variance, he has to position the jungle gym twenty-five feet away from the sideline and back line. That would recess the size of the jungle gym into his property and it would not appear as tall and as large as it is. By pulling the jungle gym away from the back fence and side fence roughly twenty-five feet, as the town requires, it will make the jungle gym appear less intrusive. Mr. Maranucci said he would put trees around the fence if necessary. He has a five, a six-foot fence, which is positioned two feet off his property line. You could not plant trees in a two-foot area. They would eventually grow against the fence and knock the fence down. If for some reason you go ahead with his variance, the town should require him to install tall evergreen trees, approximately the height of the jungle gym. On the inside of the fence, the jungle gym will be shielded from neighbors and will also help muffle any noise. The lot on the corner of Chestnut Street, which is a lot to the right of the Maranucci's home, will have the brunt of the noise as well as the jungle gym overlooking into their backyard, which impinges on their privacy. During the winter months, the jungle gym in the position Mr. Maranucci wants it will be seen not only from the homes on Chestnut and Holly Crescent, but also from homes on Persimmon Place. Mr. Maranucci purchases property knowing its shortcomings. If he planned on putting a pool, patio, et cetera, as he stated at the April 14, 2015 meeting, then maybe this wasn't the property for him. His lot is just short of one-half acre. In my opinion, the owners do not want to see the jungle gym directly behind their house. They want it off to the side in order to not block their view. On the other hand, his neighbors in all directions should not have to look at his jungle gym as well as hearing the noise that comes from it. I'm not in favor of the variance. The Maranucci should follow the existing codes in place. Thank you for your time. Signed, Concerned Homeowner.
Lot there.
All right. Can, just again for the record, because we still have an open public hearing here, we talked about moving it closer to your house, but?
It would literally be in the middle of my backyard. So it would stunt any other projects, whether it be a patio or more landscaping to do in the backyard. So just a look at it, putting it in the corner and I see landscaping in the corner. Visually, it just looks better for us. Now, the neighbors that are adjacent to my property or directly across the street, I spoke to every one of them, they do not have a problem with it at all.
None of them came out tonight, so.
Right. So the neighbors that do have a problem, obviously they're not here to speak.
Right.
And they are behind and there's full trees. The neighbor, which I have an idea of who wrote that letter, he had about $30,000 or $40,000 of pine trees put so he could block other, other neighbors, whether they have sheds or cars on their driveways. He put $40,000 on the pine trees. That total was paid for. So he cannot see it from his house.
The house that's behind you, is that lot, is that being developed right now?
There's, there's not a house or there will not be a house directly behind my lot. He's, it goes in the circle, so he's kind of.
It's a landlocked area.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what he wrote.
It's a fully wooded area.
No, I know, I agree with him. If this lot is the one there with the fence, the lot behind it is.
Yeah.
Nobody come up?
No, I'm looking at this and there's a big, big behind you, there's a landlocked piece, right this. So you can't develop that. This is you.
Yeah.
And this is?
This is all wooded area.
But that's what I'm saying. His letters indicate it was being developed behind you.
No, well, there's, there's my property. There's wooded area, a very dense wooded area.
What's this here? Is that a lot, a house?
This is, this is a lot. These are both lots.
Is that not yet built on?
Correct.
And you, and you want to put it where?
Right in this corner, right here.
Right in that corner.
Okay.
And this is, this is not a lot either?
See, houses run up, up all this way. So the woods cover all these houses that are going around in a circle, right?
This, is this a lot?
No. This is all wooded area and one of the neighbors put additional trees. Because he wanted to block, he didn't want to see this guy's shed and he had a couple cars parked in his driveway. So he asked for additional trees to be put in there to cover.
Which, which lot?
I think it's kind of cut off. He's kind of way up here.
On the other side of the road from you?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else you'd like to offer?
No, that's it.
I mean, I just make it clear for the record that the letter indicates the lot behind is being developed, but that's, it can't be.
That's incorrect.
So just make sure that's clear on the record.
Sure.
Left and right, yes. Directly behind, no.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Does she want to read it or me read it?
Okay. Appeal number 3727, Justin and Inez Maranucci, a 24-inch sideline and nine, sorry, 24-foot rear line. 24-foot rear line and a nine-foot sideline variance for a proposed 19-foot by 7-foot jungle gym pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. The location is Four Chestnut Street and Hopewell Junction. The resolution being offered by zoning board member Tara Frankow, whereas the applicant, the applicant has requested a 24-foot rear line and nine-foot sideline variance for a proposed 19-foot by 17-foot jungle gym pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas this action is a type-two action under SECRE and no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on April 29, 2015. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on May 12, 2015. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means. The variance requested is not substantial and the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. As the applicant has stated, there will be no bright roof or slide, or bright slide included with the jungle gym and the applicant is providing screening between the jungle gym and his neighbor's property. Now therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request by Justin and Inez Maranucci, Four Chestnut Street, Hopewell Junction, for a 24-foot rear line and nine-foot sideline variance for a proposed 19-foot by 7-foot jungle gym pursuant to section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the Chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the owner and applicant. Second?
So moved, yeah, second.
It's okay. Votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, you're all set.
Enjoy.
Actually, we didn't change anything, so that's okay. Okay, item number six. Appeal 3728, Earth Angels Veterinary Hospital. Dr. Alexandra Bariantos and Robert Kotikovy of Veterinary Wellness PC doing business at Earth Angels Veterinary Hospital are requesting a use variance in order to operate a veterinary hospital at 14 Corners Boulevard, Hopewell Junction, which is in R1 zoning. This is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So last month, we did have a discussion with Dr. Bariantos and Mr. Kotikovy about the fact that you operate now in a plaza in 376. You've really kind of outgrown the space, you want to move, you found this location. We did have the owner of the property was here last month, who provided some discussion for the board. Oh, you are here this evening? Thank you. About the, their limited ability to be able to lease that property, which is meeting the conditions of a use variance is extremely difficult. And so one of the things that needs to be proven is that there's a financial hardship to the owner of the property. And subsequent to that, I think about last Wednesday, we received after our request copies of tax returns for Four Corners, so that, we haven't had a chance to go through them yet, just so you're aware of that. But, you know, we have at least gotten some more financial records, some more leasing records, so that we have a better understanding of what the owner has gone through as it relates to the use of this property, leasing it with an appropriate tenant, et cetera. You are proposing to come in and operate a veterinary hospital there, which would include the overnight stays of animals if they've had surgery or had had some medical necessity. Were you also proposing boarding?
No.
Okay, so, and the primary, you do all animals, but your primary?
Dogs.
Okay, dogs and cats is your primary expected clientele, okay? Is there anything else you wish to offer based on our discussion from last week? You guys have to go into the microphone, please, just so we can get you on the record here. And can you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Eric Doring. I'm with TWC Architecture and Construction.
Okay.
We specialize in building animal care facilities around the country.
Okay.
Real quick, just to add to the overall.
Yeah, that's fine.
Perspective on it, I guess. Again, my background, we do, we specialize in, in animal care facilities all over the country. Boarding is a big part of what animal care facilities, actually, there's a big push kind of that direction in the industry, just because having a veterinarian on staff in case there is something that happens with an animal is very appealing for a lot of clients out there. This facility that we're looking at is set up quite well for, for the expansion of their business. Right now, they're in lease space. What's done over there now, we designed the, they actually have a demising wall separating their space from another tenant between their animal holding area. And we did tests early on with the, Jim Balucci, actually, the landlord at the time, just to test what was going on on the other side. And we had done some initial testing with an STC-rated wall and then we, he said, "Not a problem." He wasn't picking up anything on his side, so.
Anything is released to sound?
Yep. So, you know, that's just one of the components I know that it's always dealt with when it comes to animal holding. They're, operationally, I mean, I'm not sure, is everyone aware of their business hours and?
No, it's part of what we need to get on the record.
Okay. You want me to run through this stuff?
Sure.
Right now, the intended use of the facility is going to be basically Monday through Saturday. Hours of operation right now are intended to be 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM Tuesday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Wednesday, 9:00 PM to 8:00 on Thursday, Friday 9 to 6, Saturday 9 to 2. And then Sunday closed with the exception of picking up borders, if that makes sense to be able to do. So, not open for.
Okay. Within this facility itself, within the space, there's going to be exam rooms, there's going to be, is there going to be like a surgical suite?
Yeah, this is a full functioning animal hospital, really. There's going to be lots of components. The first part, the way the building is currently set, we're trying to take advantage of a lot of the existing conditions. When you walk in, kind of the main entrance, you'd have the option of going to the retail side, which would be the side that pretty much faces the parking lot. So that'll be for food and leashes and just all kinds of miscellaneous stuff. Actually, it's, I think they'd like to see it grown to what people want it to be. So kind of the strategy of whatever the, whatever the needs are, they want to be able to provide.
Okay, so how many exam rooms?
Exam rooms, what do we have, four? We have four exam rooms here. We, you guys probably aren't going to be able to see this. I did bring a, brought a lot of glow up for us to be able to put on display, but just walking through it, it'll be, coming into entry, we've got check-in. This, we're just calling it public circulation, but this is the waiting area. This is the, you know, initial elevator that's existing in there. Got our exam rooms, transitions into a pharmacy and ultimately a treatment area. Right after treatment, we've got surgery, radiology, doctor's office, lab, dental suite, isolation room, IT closet. This is already existing conditions, men's and women's restroom and utility. And then we've got the medical surgical ward for the animals that are being held from surgeries or whatever they're there for, for sickness.
Okay. And so how many pets can you accommodate for any typical overnight stay?
As far as a, for medical uses in here, you'd have the capability with the intensive care side, the recovery cages, and then the large, the large dog area. You could potentially have, I don't know, probably five, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15. Potentially up to 20 animals in there as far as sick animals go.
Okay.
That would be a very rare day to be able to max that out. And I mean, this, right now, I think you could currently have.
Tons of runs?
Yeah, like three, you can probably hold, kind of hold about 15, 16.
Yeah.
But to do that all at one time is very unusual.
What is your typical number of overnight?
Medically, it varies, I mean.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you are here.
Yes. It's a little crowded over here.
That's okay. Right now, it also has to do with how many doctors you have at the time. So what we're doing right now, to give an example, I have one today. On an average week, we might have three. Okay. Does that answer the question? Well, no, because how, so how many, on a typical day, if you had three doctors, how many animals would be staying overnight? Well, right now, we have one and a half doctors and we have an average of three a week. So if you were to double that, it would be six a week. So you have three animals that stay overnight? Okay. Now I'm getting what you're saying. Right. Because we're not a clinic that does emergencies. We do not, you know, taking cases, you know, to hit by cars and whatnot, we do refer. This is an alternative practice. Okay, and you don't do boarding now? Right now, we do not do boarding unless it is an animal that's sick.
Medical issue.
Right, no, I understand that. Yes. Okay. If you have an animal that's going to be there overnight, what, is there a requirement that they have to be brought outside for any amount of time during the day? No. No, okay. If an animal is boarding overnight, do they have to have some amount of outdoor time? It depends on the animal. There are no requirements for that. Okay. Particularly with the winters here, any small dog, any, any pet who is usually leash-walked. If you have ice, snow, that kind of stuff, your animals that are under 40 pounds are usually walked inside. And this is something that Eric will show you. We are doing an exercise area indoors. The dogs that would need to be walked outside for exercise purposes would not be a majority. There would be a minority. But it will vary depending on who's boarding what one. Okay, so your expectation would be that there would be very limited need to take any of the animals outside, outside of the building?
Yeah.
For exercise for more than 15 minutes? Yes. Okay. Again, for the neighbors that might be here, I think it's important for them to hear that you do expect 99% of the stay of these animals is going to be inside of your facility and not outside barking or anything like that. They will only be walked in a fenced-in area accompanied by somebody. We are not kennelling outside, we are not having doggy daycare, doggy play parties. I'm not sure, you know, there's other models. That is not our model. Okay. Questions from board members?
Well, this, we've been talking about animals staying due to medical reasons. How many animals do you plan on boarding?
Can I give you that, yes?
Sure. The, the potential that is drawn in the current design would have the possibility of, of up to 30. I'm going to reference dogs. Most people aren't concerned about the cat noise, so that's what I'm kind of focusing on there. But, but you'd have the potential to have 30 dogs in a bunch of different capacities. There's the large animal or the large dog side would be the, there's 18 runs showing it, and then we've got roughly a dozen cages for the small dogs. Then we've got a large indoor exercise area. All this is intended to be in the upper level. You guys are pretty familiar with the building, right? The, the two levels of it. So in the upper level, what we're, what we're proposing to do is not to get into a whole bunch of STC rating things, but there are many ways that we can design these walls and cover these windows to help control the, the sound. So that's really a, a low issue as far as the building is concerned. We can, we can contain that stuff in here. So there'd be a potential of 30 in the upper level and then, like I said, we've got this surrounded with a, well, it's basically a second wall inside of the first wall.
So there could be 30 animals upstairs and 20 animals downstairs for an overnight stay?
Yeah. We're doing that.
Understood. You've done really, really well. Okay. I just, we just need to understand what the maximum technically would be, capacity-wise. Jim?
Understood, fine, then.
Okay. All right, so let's open it up for comment, because I believe some of your neighbors are going to be here, so. So is there anyone here to speak for or against a request from Earth Angels Veterinary Hospital requesting a use variance in order to operate a veterinary hospital at 14 Corners Boulevard? Okay. Mary, this is where we're going to read number, those that signed in for number six. JH something.
Man in the red shirt.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is James Englishby and I'd like to make a statement for the record.
Okay.
I own a home located at 159 Phillips Road since 2006, which is located directly across the road from this subject building. I recently saw a video of your zoning board meeting on April 14 concerning the issuance of a variance to allow Earth Angels Veterinary Hospital to relocate to this building located in Four Corners. One of the board members asked a question as to how residents of Four Corners would feel about dogs being walked and the issue of barking dogs. The male applicant for this variance advised that he initially was outside this building for 30 minutes and during that time, he saw a half dozen people walking their dogs and some of the dogs were barking. And further stated, so it's a dog-friendly community. This statement does not ring true with me, since I've lived in this community and as a part of my exercise routine. I have walked throughout this community on a daily basis, weather permitting, for one and a half to two hours each day at various times of the day. During my daily walks, I might encounter one resident walking a dog, but most of the time, there are no, no dog walkers. Most of the residents who own dogs in Four Corners have a fenced-in yard or invisible fence. This is a classic case of tell them what you think they want to hear, whether it's true or not. On the same video, the owner or representative of the owners of this building stated that this building has been an economic hardship. I understand that this building was sold by WCI for a fraction of its original cost and the owner or owners knew full well when they purchased it exactly what the zoning restrictions were. In the meantime, during their ownership, they have not properly maintained the building and therefore not making it desirable for someone who fits the zoning requirements to rent it. It's actually an ICE law. I also question how aggressively they have marketed this building to attract tenants such as a learning center, real estate or law offices. The real estate values of Four Corners are depressed and this is a clear example of The real estate values of 4 Corners are depressed, and this is a clear example of how the owner or owners of this building want to unload their economic hardship and transfer this hardship to the residents of 4 Corners, especially those who live in close proximity to the proposed animal hospital. I can just see the real estate there when I go to sell my house, lovely home directly opposite an animal hospital. Recently, the owners or owner also proposed building eight or nine apartments within the nine to 10,000 square foot building, which was denied, and clearly demonstrates that disregard for the welfare of 4 Corner residents. The latest request for a variance before the zoning board of appeals appears to be a matter or act of desperation on the part of the owners, who want to unload this so-called economic hardship, as well as some of the residents, as well, as well as some of the residents of 4 Corners saying that the building needs to be occupied. I say no tenant or business is better than the wrong tenant or business. Needless to say, the process of issuing a variance for this type of business in a residential neighborhood calls for a careful deliberation and complete and total justification. The proposed veterinarian animal hospital, which will board potentially an unknown number of dogs and cats or possibly other animals, poses quality of life issues and ramifications such as barking dogs, a building and operating room of rooms, x-ray equipment, other medical equipment, medical waste, and other, as well as other waste product, and a variety of medications. Since this building is not part of 4 Corners HRA, we have no control over these critical It is my opinion that there is no justification for a change in zoning to allow an animal hospital to do business in a residential neighborhood such as 4 Corners for all the reasons truthfully stated. Earth Angels Veterinary Hospital belongs where it presently located in a commercial business strip mall. If larger accommodations are required or needed, they should look for suitable accommodations in the same type of mall. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Elliot Turman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elliot Turman, I'm a resident of 4 Corners, been a resident of 4 Corners for approximately eight years. I've been through several trials with the present owners, and what the current proposal is, is a step forward as far as I'm concerned. But we do have, there was a, a meeting with the people who are proposing what they, what they want, and the residents of, of the, of the community. It was a positive meeting, as opposed to a meeting that was held by the current owners, which was not a positive meeting. The meeting that was held by the, the current owners were trying to offer reasons why the building should be rezoned for residential. We felt that, the residents of 4 Corners felt that what they were proposing would be detrimental to the, to the community, and would bring it down. Therefore, a petition was circulated and signed by over 100 residents, and, and submitted to the, to the town, it was accepted. Therefore, the, the threat that was offered, it appeared to be a threat, was offered to, to the homeowners that they'd be sorry that what would happen, that the new owners of, once they sold the property, would have their, their, their way with, with the way they want to run the property, but we knew full well that this would not be the case, they would still have to come before you folks to get a, a variance. The new proposal is a step in the right direction as far as I'm concerned, I don't speak for everybody, I just speak for myself. There are a number of concerns that we have, the concerns are the number of boarded animals. It's fine to have boarded animals who are medically treated, stay overnight for care, it's great, the, the, the proposers have said that they would have possibly people stay over to watch these animals, which was, which was welcome. The concern that we have is that if the board approves the, the kenneling, the boarding of animals, that if the, the Earth Angels, if Earth Angels allows, gets, gets the variance to allow kennels, that anybody who subsequently came in after them could very possibly increase the number of animals boarded there, and thus make it unwieldy. If, if there is any approval of this zoning variance that they're looking for, I would suggest, this is my opinion only, that the, any variance that would be given to these folks would have to come up again for approval, so that it's, it's not chiseled in stone that any amount of dogs would be allowed, it would have to be on a, on a, on a one-to-one, I don't know how to say it better, but each proposal would have to be-
So any expansion of the use of them would have to be revisited again?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
The other concern I had was-
We should have your papers.
The, the waste removal. I asked the question of Earth Angels, how they would remove the waste, and this waste is, is not only regular garbage, it's also medical waste, it's also refuse, refuse from the dogs, and how it would be removed, and they said it would be removed on a weekly It's my opinion, and my opinion only, that this is not acceptable, because in the summer months where it does get warm, fumes do build up, and the place would become unlivable, and you would have to walk quite a bit far from the, from the building to, to get away from the smell. So, any refuse would have to be removed on a more regular basis than once a week, more They also talked to us about having soundproofing within the building, which is a great idea. They talked about double roll insulation, and putting insulation between the walls to deaden the sound. I'm, I'm not, I, I, I agree with that, that's a wonderful thing to do, and I know that that situation would probably eliminate some of the sounds, but my neighbor who lives, Jim who lives right across the street, has a valid, valid point. There would be noise, there are people on the, on the west side of them who would be affected by it, there are people across the street from where the parking lot is now who would be affected by it. Would it bring down the property values of those homes around that hospital? Possibly, I don't know, I'm not an expert in that, I'm just guessing, but, I'm just about through and out, but what I want to say is that this is a positive step, but we have to take careful, measured steps in, in approaching the approval of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Graham?
Hi, my name is Heather Graham, I live at 155 Phillips, right across the street from the proposed building on 1-4 Corners, right next to Jim Englishby, so my house would be greatly affected by this, I live directly across the street, my bedrooms are in the front of the house, directly across the street. I moved there almost two years ago with my young daughter, spent my, used my adult, all my adult savings to buy a house in a quiet, safe, sanitary, lovely environment for my daughter, that's why I did it. We were promised or told that that building would be used for small businesses, like an ice cream parlor, a gift shop, maybe a pizza area, not a kennel. I would not have moved there, I would not have put my life savings to buy a home across the street from a kennel. That could house potentially 50, maybe more, animals at some point, dogs. I've heard them say that they will use sound control, but I don't think, they have said they can't guarantee that it's going to be soundproof, we're, we're not going to hear any sound, I don't think they can promise that. There will be sound, there will be noise, there will be barking, constant barking, at various times, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The waste, as was mentioned, removing the waste, the smell that that will have. My second-story bedrooms look over the, the bushes into the grass area and the parking lot. My daughter's going to see dogs relieving themselves all day long, seven days a week, she said that they'll bring them out, you know, one, two, three at a time, they're still going to be going out. Dogs need to go out, and the, the thought of, no, we're going to keep the dogs inside to relieve themselves all day long, 50 dogs, I would hate to see the inside of that building or smell the inside of that building after that, so some of these dogs are going to be coming outside. My resale value of my home, if I decide we can't take this, if my daughter can't sleep at night because of hearing this and I need to move, what about the resale value of my home? Who's going to make up that difference? That really concerns me. These people, they want to grow their business, they're looking financially at it to grow their business. This is where we live, this is where we live every single day, 24 hours a day, where we'll have to live with whatever they put across the street from us. This is a residential area, it is, when you look at a house for sale online, it says luxury living, resort living. A kennel is not luxury living, it's not resort living across the street from a kennel. People will not want to live or buy a home that is across the street from a kennel with up to 50 barking dogs going outside to relieve themselves, people coming in with their pets to be examined, relieving themselves along the way to get inside, that wasn't mentioned of where that will be, what, where that area will be. And I'm a dog lover, I have a dog, so this isn't about being against dogs, but I just don't want 50 of them across the street from me. Typically, kennels are not allowed in residential areas because of that reason, because it's loud and potentially smelly. So to ask that we give up what we have all worked so hard for, and to speak for myself, what I have worked my life for, to give for my young little daughter to be taken away because they want to grow their business, it's upsetting to me. I don't want to live across the street from a kennel. Thank you.
Julie Donovan?
Donahue.
Donahue? Couldn't see, couldn't even. Hi.
Good evening. I live at 147 Phillips Road, I'm actually two houses over from where Heather lives. I agree with her, I have great concerns with the noise, the soundproofing, which obviously, even if it is built correctly, you're going to hear something. And my concern is if the animals are kennelled overnight, you know, you hear dogs by Humane Society, which I know is very different because they're outside and whatnot, but you hear the howling and the barking, and it just seems to be 24 hours a day for the most part. Again, property values, I bought my house in 2006, mom and I combined resources because she has ill health and can't live by herself any longer, the house has already depreciated $100,000 just due to the economy. My concern is, as Heather said, you know, what if I decide to sell my house, how is this going to affect me? Because again, it's a residential neighborhood, and you don't expect that kind of a business in a neighborhood. And if you look at something like Carity Chills over in Somers, okay, and they had, signed up the same idea with the buildings down at the bottom of the hill, and they have stores and restaurants and whatnot, and I understand it's on a larger scale, but even that is sitting away from the houses, it's not in the middle of the community. And as much as I would love to see, you know, something like this happen in this building, I don't know if it's the best choice for all of us, especially being directly across the street from it, maybe, you know, a couple houses over. Basically, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Anybody else?
John Wade, I live at 246 Buttonwood Way. I have to say that when I first heard this idea about the dog hospital, I thought it was a good idea, mainly because I live about a mile away from where it would be. But then I realized that Heather was speaking before, it was my daughter, and I visit her house frequently and realize that this would be a real hardship for the entire neighborhood, for Jim and for the other neighbors. And then I began to think more about what would the total effect be on the community? And if you think about what they said about the value of the community, directly across from this animal hospital is the clubhouse for the community. And at that clubhouse, people gather all the time, there are all sorts of events with young children there, plus the pool is open all summer long, there are basketball courts, there are tennis courts, children there constantly, and they would be exposed to this noise and the sanitation problems that were brought up originally. The other thing I want to mention is that when we had the meeting with TWC, they said that it would not be a problem having this because they've built other animal hospitals like this, but they gave out brochures, and I looked through all of their brochures, and in their brochures, all of their properties were out on 10, 15 acre pieces of property, and they were bragging about that. And now we're putting it within a couple of hundred feet of homes, a clubhouse, and other problems in the neighborhood. Everybody has to go by there, the school bus stops there every day, it's just really not a place for an animal hospital. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you sign in, sir?
Excuse me?
Excuse me, can you sign in, please? Print your name, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. I think I'm going to suggest to the board once again that we close and reserve our decision.
I kind of caught in late, I was wondering if the applicant has anything to add before we close?
I don't want to call this, well-
At least they did go through, they brought a score plan, they, we talked about hours of operation, how many animals.
No, I do understand, but again, we had public comment, and if they would like to make comment, test what this heard from the public, to supplement whatever was-
Well, I mean, I think some of the issues should probably be addressed, concerned in medical waste and the animal waste, and what, what that I think needs to be addressed on the record.
That's fine. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we, we did have a, a meeting with the homeowners here, April 29th, because of date, good turnout, most of the people that are here tonight were there and got to hear kind of what the game plan is with it. We left there feeling pretty positive, everyone seemed to be pretty on board with the same, really a couple of concerns. Sound, how do we deal with sound? Waste, which, that one is, is actually very easy, because it's, you know, whether it's fecal mileage pickup, there's a number of ways to handle that. If we need to have provisions for the frequency of pickup, that's, that's a minor issue to take care of. Medical waste is all dealt with through medical disposal, so that's really not a, a biohazard, we don't actually throw that in the trash. And then the standard trash is like what anybody else is going to have, so, that's kind of the simplistic side. As far as the, the boarding component, which is a critical aspect in making this whole thing work, it, it does not work financially without, without that component, you know, I've heard a number of different comments that kind of range all over the board, obviously that was before we talked earlier tonight, but the capacity of the facility is to hold 50 animals, and that's a combination of cats and dogs. The actual boarding capacity is only 30 in there. With that, we're looking at the vast majority of the time, I'm going to say, probably 90 plus percent of the time, they are all going to be inside. The outdoor exercises for the animals that won't leave themselves inside, there, there are just some animals like that. Just like any other resident in the area that has a dog that lets them outside in a fenced area, that's the same type of program that we're talking about. We're talking about one or two animals going out at a time, the only difference is that we're going to be having them leashed, it's not a free rein environment. We're, we're full intentions of having a privacy fence around that area to help control visual as well as some sound. In addition to that, we were hoping to do some landscape buffer as well, that would probably climb up, we were talking about an eight-foot fence, which is something that if a dog did get off their leash in that fenced area, I haven't ever seen a dog be able to get over an eight-foot fence, so that's what we would be working with. But then we were looking at having, you know, some type of decorative plantings around that to help with breaking up kind of the fence view, but be a nice privacy fence. That's the intent of that space, it is really meant to keep everything inside. This to me, when you talk about a resort community, we're talking about luxury boarding here. One of the confusing parts that I think has happened over the course of time is the confusion between what a kennel- between what a kennel is and what a luxury boarding facility is. We're talking about the luxury boarding facility, we're talking about a controlled indoor environment that has the exhaust levels on it, that has the cleanability capability, we're not talking about anything outside, we're not talking any chain link, I mean, you're talking about a quality environment. And really, from a veterinary hospital standpoint, the type of medicine that they practice, it doesn't make sense to do anything other than that. So from that standpoint, this is a step up from the word kennel. In fact, I don't even like the word, it doesn't really apply to what we're doing. We're talking about boarding animals, and that's it with it. Is that the simple version? Do you have any to add?
I just want to just reiterate, we're a medical facility, a veterinary hospital first, we're not a kennel that, oh, by the way, we do veterinary medicine. We've made our reputation on practicing first-rate, high-quality veterinary medicine that people seek out from us, and they'll come see us for that. So the kenneling is boarding, actually, I like to call it, a bit like kenneling, is ancillary, but our primary function is a veterinary facility.
Just to add a little bit, I mean, some of the other comments, you know, quality-of-life component, I mean, I would really be surprised if anybody felt any negative impact from it. I would be, just based on what I've seen around the country and the places that we've done, and I've built facilities in all kinds of environments. So like I said, I would be very surprised, in fact, we've already, you've heard everyone talk about, their homes have already depreciated significantly, and we had nothing to do with it.
Right.
That happened on its own, so I don't think this is the component that would cause a devaluing of it. In addition to that, right now, it's deteriorating. There's been parties in there, there's been all kinds of problems with that. We're just looking to make it better. I mean, really, that's what it comes down to, is, you're going to say it's a step in the right direction, this is something that I think would be a huge asset for. I don't know how it couldn't be, so, and that's the intent, I mean, that's why we had the homeowners association meeting, was to just, to get that comment, I mean, because we want this facility to be something everyone's excited about, not just letting it go.
The veterinarians themselves are licensed, medical waste is licensed, right? Removal medical waste?
It's strictly controlled, and we contract that with companies that handle human medical waste.
But there are regulations, health regulations in terms of how they deal with that?
Yeah.
Is the removal of the waste, the animal waste also, is that regulated?
If it was done medically, there are some things that fall around the medical side, but from a boarding component, no, that's not going to be a regulated component. We just have no problem following whatever protocol we want to put in place for it.
Okay.
I mean, this, that shouldn't even be something of concern, we can deal with that, is what I'm getting at, whatever provision that is.
I think as a neighbor, I'd want a little bit more assurance as to what that dealing with it is.
Yeah, and that's fine, and I think we're saying that is totally acceptable to us if there's provisions around that, that we have to deal with that, whether it's freezing or, you know, whatever component, that's something we can deal with.
Okay.
Can you suggest some components? Because I'm not aware of the components.
Of the what?
Can I just hold up?
Yeah.
This is for a use variance. So I think what needs to get on the record more is to answer the questions, one through four of the use variance, not so much as to the use that they're proposing, but to say whether or not they comply with the use variance.
Well, we got that by documentation, we have all that evidence for our review.
But, you know, did anybody say anything about the alleged hardship being self-created?
Thank you.
Will not alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood, then all that they're talking about will come along in the site plan process.
There's two-part process.
Right now, you have to decide
Yes.
whether any of the other uses that are permitted, I just think we're getting too into depth.
Lloyd, I see you're sharing that.
Before when, I'm sorry, no, you go ahead. No, she says possibly we'd close and reserve. We have a lot of documentation on the financials.
Right.
We haven't addressed that at all, I understand that. But we're letting them go forward, they start to speak first, so we'll have that gone, I think that's why most of the members of the public are here, so that they can have their questions answered. Obviously, we need all the financial information till we get to that point.
And the other question, all four questions?
Yeah, I understand. But when we get this understood, then we're sort of going around through the back door, I agree with that.
The neighbors are here, they've raised some issues, I think it's just appropriate that they, while we have the professional here, that we should be able to give them the answers that they're looking for, just so that we also have a higher level of comfort as we get to the other issues that we have to address.
Again, it's also required by the statute, looking into the issues that you've talked about.
So as I said, right from the very beginning, getting a use variance approved is an extremely difficult standard that we have to meet as a board in our review. So at this point, I just want to make sure that we hear all the neighbors and, you know, get as many of their questions addressed as we can. So are there any other neighbors that wish to comment at this point? Yes? You guys come back up to the microphone?
I just wanted to add something, that when they went over it, they said that the dogs will be unsupervised at night, that no one will be there on the boarding part overnight with those dogs. So I think that, and they live, you know, 45 minutes, an hour away, so that's something also to consider, that they are going to be unattended all night if something happens, there's an emergency, something's going on with the dogs. We'll have to, as a community, deal with that, but they will not be within that community, nor will anyone be there supervising.
Okay, thank you. Are you going to have any kind of security videos or something like that, that's video feeds, that you'd be able to watch what's going on from a remote location? I mean, a lot of businesses operate that way, there's nobody physically there, but you can see on your phone what's going on, what the video's showing.
We could have video showing, we're an animal facility, we're all about the health and welfare of the animals, and if the boarding gets to that point where we have a certain number of animals, we then look at having somebody there overnight. As it is now, when we have a medical boarder who needs overnight attendance, there is a technician with that animal, so those animals are not left unattended.
Okay.
But strictly on the boarding side, you know, it's not like we're going to move in there, we're going to have these, you know, it takes time to build up your business, and we can definitely put in protocols as we go along, as we get busier and have somebody in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. You, there were two issues that were bothering me. You're saying that it's not a kennel, but it is kind of a boarding facility, can you differentiate what a kennel and a boarding facility is?
Well, it's more perception, and people hear kennel, they think it's a lot of outdoor runs, dogs left outside, unattended, sort of that old model, you know, just let them stay in the sun, packs of dogs, and we'll bring them in when they're tired. That's not what we're proposing. We're, when I say boarding, we're going to have, each dog is going to have a room, they're going to be attended, there's going to be a central play area, and they're brought outside, one or two at a time with an attendant, not let go. Excuse me, there's not going to be any type of structures in the rear of the property at all, the only thing we want to do is fence it in. So I like to say boarding to differentiate us from the old-style mentality of kennels, of dogs just running free in packs. This is going to be strictly supervised, there's no large groups of dogs running around out there to their own devices.
Okay, you had mentioned about soundproofing, can you, is there a decibel level in your facilities that you have to monitor or something as far as noise is concerned?
Yeah, I mean, we can get into the acoustical side of it, but the baseline that I'll give you is, dog barks at 100 decibels, so measured at about a foot away, okay, dog barks at 100 decibels. Over a certain distance, you get dropped from that, okay? When they're on the other side of an STC-50 wall, which is typically how an exterior wall would be created, you get that decibel drop of 50 on a properly created wall. What we're talking about doing is building an additional wall inside of that, potentially an STC-65 or higher. So you're looking at a decibel drop through that wall of that volume. So in essence, a dog barking on this side of the wall, right at it, is going to have a decibel level of 100, it's going to pass through that wall with a reduction of 65, and I just have this real quick breakdown, but at 50 feet, you end up, 50 feet away from that sound source, you end up with a drop of roughly 34 decibels, even at that drop. So at that distance, you're talking about the sound level of like rustling leaves. Like, that's what the decibel drop does when you do that. Now, conversely, an outside dog barking, obviously you're going to have that major intensity going, you're going to hear, if it was a 100-decibel dog, you would hear, if it was direct at you, you would hear, at that same 50 feet, you would hear 70 decibels, which is a fairly loud number. I don't know if any of you heard, but just a little while ago, there was a guy in here that had a Harley motorcycle out there. He started it up and took off. Harley runs about 100 decibels when they accelerate across the road. I don't know if anybody in here heard that, but that went right by out front. It was difficult to hear out there. So there's a pretty significant drop when you talk about going through the wall. To me, the biggest concern that anybody would have would be the exterior side, and that's our intent, is to control that with not multiple dogs out there, basically one to two animals that would be outside in a controlled environment, not looking at squirrels running around, not looking at joggers, not looking at cars going by, they don't see any of that. They're in a controlled, restricted environment that way. That's the difference that we're talking about, to help control sound. Dogs bark because they, either they're not being paid attention to, or they've got a reason to bark at an animal.
And so basically, you're also proposing a, you said, I think, eight-foot fence? What kind of fence were you thinking of?
Privacy style, so like, well, we want it to match with the area, there's a lot of different styles, but it would be a white privacy, basically solid, up eight feet.
Okay.
Yep, and then what we'd like to do is some landscape on the outside of it as well, so it's not just solid white.
Okay.
And just, again, so it's clear, the existing wall's ST-50.
Yeah, a typical exterior wall, and now that one's not right now because it's not finished on the inside, but...
So you're saying I'm building ST-65, you're not putting an ST-65 up. If it's 50, you plan on putting up another 15-foot?
Yeah, it'll probably go in more than that, because it's actually a rated assembly, and it's based on all the components, with the exterior sheeting and the inside drywall, and whether we weave the bad insulation, there's a bunch of whatever.
I understand, because you're total, you're talking about...
Yeah, we're talking about going to a 65, having that inside created that way.
Okay.
So the inside dogs, the inside animals should really be a non-issue for anybody. I mean, that's our goal with it, is to have it be a non-issue. I would say that in most cases, you're, they're still held to any noise compliance that exists in the area anyway. If anybody is over on noise, if I'm listening to the radio too loud or whatever, and it bothers somebody, they get called on. There is a noise ordinance to come into play.
Okay, again, before the wall, you have this ST-65, what about windows and doors? How are you going to insulate those?
Yeah, the windows do have to be dealt with, actually, there's an existing window there, we are going to have to bring that level of the window up. So there's probably going to be an additional window on the inside, and some additional level of insulation done to help restrict that sound from being able to go out the windows. Yep, that's part of it.
Okay. There's a gentleman behind you who wants to make another comment.
Couple of points. You keep, you've mentioned off cuff about the financial aspects that impact this place. Just to show you where the present owners are, they just paid their back taxes, and approximately, I may be wrong, about $65,000, which they owned, they owed to the county and the town for several years. They were in Rears as Four Corners New York LLC quite a number of times. When did they pay these back taxes and penalties? About three weeks ago, approximately, to help the situation. That's what the town wants to get rid of. I know you're not going to hurt. If the taxes are not paid, the county will take it up and make you whole, but this is where it came from. I'm sure that these folks will be up to date and pay their taxes as good citizens, and do everything that they say they will do, and adhere to the board recommendations and to the zoning that they're involved with. But 100 decibels of barking reduced by 30, 35 decibels brings you down to 65 decibels. Have you ever heard a dog, a dog, barking all night? 65 or 35 decibels can be quite annoying. So if there's going to be anything similar to that, or any kind of soundproofing, I would strongly suggest that more soundproofing would be in order to keep that noise down, because it's not just one woof, it's multiple woofs.
Understood.
That's, that's not what I understood you were saying, though. You're putting up a 65 wall, so it's going to reduce it down to 35.
To 35.
And 50 feet from where it's being emitted from at 35, you're saying 50 feet from that, you're going to hear...
You're reducing it down, you've got to remember that.
Excuse me, can you just come to the mic, please?
You've got to remember that, you know, when you're looking at it from a scientific standpoint, they're measuring it with a tool, so the intensity is dispersed so far at that. So the drop at 35, even though it's equivalent to rustling leaves, it would be equivalent to rustling leaves right here, not at 50 feet away. So it's a little bit of a perspective that you've got to look at when you're talking about the scientific side of it, I guess, or the technical side. But yeah, the intention is that anybody outside of there, you would have to have an absolutely still night and no traffic driving on the road. The traffic actually creates about a 50-decibel rating, if you were standing right on that sidewalk. Just to give you a little bit of perspective on what kind of sound level we're talking about. And actually, I think, I don't have it in there, but I think the world record for dogs barking is like 70, maybe there was 100 dogs or something like that in Colorado, and they read it at like 124 or something like that, 136, somewhere there. Pretty loud, but it took that many in an outdoor environment in Colorado to do it. So like I said, it's, the intention of this is to reduce that. We don't want the animals stressed out, that's not a good environment across the board, whether it's other cats in there or the other dogs.
Okay, at this point, since there's no more additional public comment, I'm going to suggest we adjourn until next month. In the meantime, we need an opportunity to review the financial information that we submitted last week, and, you know, if there's anything else that you're going to want to submit to us for next month. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
The public hearing remains open?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to adjourn for next month with the public hearing being...
To June, second law to June 9th.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so if anybody has any additional comments, you'd be welcome to come back again next month, or you can put them in writing in the meantime, and then we'll read them into the record at next month's meeting. All right, thank you. I am number seven, is appeal 3469 Broderson, Gary Broderson, 65 Ritter Road, Stormville, was granted a special permit for an accessory professional use, a music studio to be located in his home on October 12, 2010, which was renewed on November 14, 2012 for a period of two years, and is before the board now requesting a two-year renewal of said special permit pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion. Aye.
Good evening. Let's just get the door closed and then, okay. So we did meet with you last month just to get and understand how the music studio's going. I know you said there was a low over the last couple months, or Christmas time, that time, but that you're now, you want to go back to having, holding music lessons at your studio. We haven't heard of any difficulties in the last two years, so we did agree we would put this out for a special permit. You're not looking to alter the schedule, you provided the schedule to us of what the classes would be. Anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members?
Nope, I'm going.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against a request from Mr. Broderson, 65 Ritter Road, Stormville, to renew the special permit for the music studio in his home?
Can we sing an hallelujah?
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, reference to appeal 3469 by applicant Gary Broderson, seeking a two-year extension of a special permit for an accessory professional office to allow music lessons to be given in his home pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance, to be located at 65 Ritter Road, Stormville, New York, under tax number 665503128478, and resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, and whereas the applicant applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for an accessory professional office to allow music lessons to be given in his home pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this is an action under type two, action under C-COR, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on April 29, 2015, and whereas the zoning board of appeals has held its public hearing on May 12, 2015, and whereas the scheduled classes for the requested extension was provided with the application, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that Mr. Broderson has adhered to the rules and regulations that were included in his decision order... in his decision order approved on October twelfth, two thousand and ten, an extension of which was granted on November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby extends this special permit for an accessory professional office for a term of two years to a new expiration date of October twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, at which time the applicant must cease to offer music lessons in his home unless he has applied to renew the special permit, and such permit shall be reviewed by this board. And be it further resolved that the applicant is reminded that he must continue to adhere to the rules and regulations that were included in his decision and order on October sixth, two thousand and ten, and be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Your second?
Second.
Folks as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries, okay?
Thank you.
We'll see you in October of two thousand and sixteen.
Can I ask something about the escrow?
You can speak to Pam, but you probably have to give her a call in the morning because we've got to finish the meeting tonight, okay? Thank you. All right, so that's it for our public hearings this evening. All of the, the rest of our business tonight is going to be related to reviews. There will be opportunity for public comment, comment on each of these reviews at some point to be scheduled. So item number eight is Appeal three seven one six, Three Daughters Holding Company, Lehigh Landscaping. Three Daughters Holding Company, Lehigh Landscaping. Ten Sprout Creek Court, Wobbling Falls, is requesting a ninety-six frontline variance for three fuel storage tanks, one four-hundred gallon gas tank, a three-hundred gallon diesel tank, and a three-hundred gallon off-road diesel tank, and a ninety-five foot frontline and twenty-five foot rearline variance for a twenty-foot by thirty-foot seasonal display area to be located in the northeast corner of a property pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventeen of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Dennis Lynch, Engineering. As you mentioned, we're here discussing Lehigh Landscaping. We are seeking a variance for three tanks located here. The full setback was a hundred feet from the town line, which the Sprout Creek is. So we're seeking the variance or setback for that. And also, as you mentioned, seasonal display here, which would be a tractor or hay bale.
Oh, that's where you're proposing to put it. Why are you proposing to put it all the way over there? Why not in a large area?
This is at three seventy-six here.
Oh, I understand.
And that's where you are most of it.
That's not where they actually set up the display last year, that's why I?
This is where the tractor was located in that room. This is the sign that's here now. I think it's kind of deceiving because the property line is not here. The garage door starts a little bit farther over here, but that's where they're proposing. That's where it was set up last time then.
No, it was definitely set up on the other side of the fence last year. I'm sorry, the other side of the sign. It was more closer to the parking area last year, the tractor, so.
That's, this is?
That's what they're asking for.
Yes.
Understood. All right, what about the, when they were last here, there were some other additional things that we noticed? The canopy, the hoop house?
The hoop house that's here, there was a canopy. They are in contract with this piece across the street here. Everything that would have seen the running square is going to be relocated. This hoop house, there's some storage over here, generally relocated on this property, which we are in contract with, with them to go through, so kind of moving with the front door.
What about the metal canopy that they put over with it, where all those fuel storage tanks? There's like a metal roof over top of that?
Yes, that'd be part of the variance for the structure of this.
We need to specifically state that. Right now, you're asking for the variance only for the tanks. So if you need a canopy over the tanks, that needs to be part of the request.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll just add it to it, it's not a, it's not a big deal, we'll deal with it. We just want to be clear that if you need that canopy, that we're addressing it at this time too. All right, do we address the, wasn't there an issue about something with needing bars closer to the door last time? There was, there was another tank or something closer to the door?
I think you were going to have propane tanks for people to?
Yeah, did that get it like that?
We have those in tanks here.
Yes, right there, exactly.
I don't know.
And we were concerned about whether they needed to be borrowed or something like that in front of it? So is that still an issue or no?
Well, at this time, I don't think it was.
Okay.
I believe they're going to go in front of it.
Okay.
There's a plenty of work issue here. The valleys.
Yeah, that would be a plenty of work.
So when they talk about a seasonal display of twenty feet by thirty feet, how tall is it likely to be?
I think the largest thing would be the tractor that they were talking about. Probably hay bales with some flowers on it, it's not going to be?
Four or five feet, probably?
No, it's not going to be forty-five.
Four or five?
Oh, yes, I thought you said forty-five, I'm sorry.
Well, it wasn't quite, oh man.
Yes, no, they're going to be smaller.
Four or five feet, okay. I just, there's just other property there that, that's what makes me wonder why they need it in that corner.
There is, they do have some landscaping.
Right, along the front area there, right.
Down here, that's one spot that's really not landscaped. A lot of this is for more of a landscaping display here.
And so how long are they proposing displays for? We asked them to give us these details and this is really the first we're seeing of it, so.
I don't think they have a specific time for each, I mean, it's not going to be every season, it might be every other season, kind of as?
Well, but that's the question. You can have a seasonal display that's three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it just changes every season. So is that's what being requested? Or is this going to be while in the fall, we're going to put up some pumpkins and hay bales and a tractor?
That's, I believe what they're intending to do.
For five or six weeks and nothing the rest of the year?
Probably for, you know, Thanksgiving or Christmas, things of all those nature.
I think, again, we're going to need some answers on that.
Because seasonal display could be a spring season also.
Yeah, right now, you have the, you will, the flower material, you know, the baskets and everything comes out and it's sitting in the parking lot, so.
I think we need clarification on what?
I think we need clarification on that for the hearing.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay setting it up for a public hearing subject to you providing that clarification, so that if any neighbors come out, they can understand what that, what that means.
That's not a problem.
Okay, in that location, are you not, you're not blocking any site distance? You're not blocking the view or anything like that?
No. No, the, the site distance from Sprout Creek Court is not going to be obstructed, it's actually behind the sign slightly, and then there's no roads coming along this way. So it would be away from.
Okay. Comments or questions from board members? If not?
I, I just, basically, you have three tanks up there, and then you have an asphalt pad. What is that pad used for, next to the tank?
That's just a pad if they're fueling vehicles where there's, where the pad, the actual?
To catch any drips.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out why, why these, these tanks could not be put right on the existing pad or then try to push it against the fence?
I think it's going to tend to keep us far back, closest to that fence, so they have more room to have?
Vehicles and law here.
Okay.
There's the existing dares, set system that's here. So we're going to be able to go on, probably go into the site, so that's where they're proposing.
Can you give us the measurements of that canopy? Because you have to include that in the noticing. All right, you know, we don't need tonight, if you can make sure Pam gets it in the next day or two?
No.
Because we've got to make sure we properly notice this, take care of everything one, one time.
Okay, so would be three canopies or just one canopy covered?
It's, it's one canopy. Right now, if you go past the site, there's a five-by-six foot fence. Starts from the back of that, probably goes up about a foot and covers two or three tanks.
And you're just going to want to be clear what color that canopy's going to be, okay? I feel probably going to want to restrict that it not be any kind of bright color. All right, if it flows with the fence, I think the fence is white, so.
I believe that, I believe top it's white or metal or nothing.
Yeah, whatever it is, let's just be clear that it's not going to change colors at some point in the future. All right, okay for public hearing, motion?
Yeah, I have a problem, just want to make sure we're clear, we need a canopy? And we need that information on how many days per season they're looking for their seasonal display?
Right.
Are they looking for year-round, three hundred and sixty-five days a year? Are they looking for, to put something out there for a month for four seasons or something like that?
Okay.
Yeah, that clarification on what we need, I'd make a motion for an offer of public hearing for June ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Pam will give you your instructions for your sign?
Thank you.
And then we'll see you next month. All right. We'll up to item number nine, Appeal three seven one seven, Correio, R. Michael Correio, forty-nine West Hook Road, Hopeful Junction, is requesting a thirty-foot rearline variance for an existing thirteen-hundred-eighty-three square foot, two-story detached garage. The existing house has a twenty-five-hundred square foot footprint and a thirty-six foot rearline variance for a proposed detached garage and a breezeway pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Motion to open?
I have some other?
This is all public hearing.
My entire?
We missed one and we're not opening the public hearing. Keep me honest.
I have some other supporting documents.
Okay, all right, so we, we've seen you before, we were looking through some of the issues. You're going to take down one of the garages, but at this point, you, you've explored the idea of the lot line realignment and you just said that just didn't work, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you were waiting for a survey. You got the survey.
We should have the survey, yes.
I'm not sure if there's any other issue that we, you said you have some additional documentation files?
Yeah, yeah, we've got one garage down.
So you're giving us options?
Oh boy.
Yeah. I think it's better if there weren't too many additional items like?
Yeah, you have to tell us.
Yeah, you have to tell us, we can't really?
Yeah, absolutely.
You have to tell your, you know, best one that's going to fly in.
Well, I guess the first option is what he prefers, it says?
Yeah, so if you go to the third page, so I'm looking to do two things. One, I'm looking to put a, an attached garage onto the house, and you can see that as labeled option one, B.
Okay.
And I'm looking for a rear yard variance for that, setback variance.
Okay, just to be clear, what's the size of your property? You have a really large property.
Five acres.
Yeah, that's my call, okay.
And then within the five acres, you have a pond also, and then you've got a little creek or, or something passing by?
Yes.
So you don't really, even though you have five acres, but you don't have a lot of usable space?
Not a lot of usable space, yeah. And everything, most of the property is in the front, so it limits where I can put?
Okay, but we are clear that you are not, no longer operating a business out of this address?
I am.
You have a business address here?
Correct.
But you have no machines?
Once the, once I finish with this project, the machines are going to leave the property.
Oh, because you still have to do some work here, would you?
Yes.
Okay, but, and they're not going to return?
And they're not going to return.
Okay.
Well, I do have a one-ton dump truck with a plow, and I use it to plow my driveway.
Hydraulic vehicles are not a permitted commercial vehicle in residential zone.
What's not?
Hydraulic.
Hydraulic vehicles.
Dump trucks are limited with hydraulics.
I can disconnect the hydraulics, if that's what it takes.
What, what do you have?
A one-ton dump truck.
Oh.
A little dog.
You've got satisfied the building department.
Yes. Okay.
All right, are you, are you going to put finished, like, doors on this, you know? I mean, that was one of the things we commented on this one was?
We were going to side it.
Kind of has a rough look to it, if you know what I mean, not?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you are going to finish it nicely?
Correct.
I mean, not that anybody sees it, but at some point, the gravel yard behind you might get developed as something, who knows, you know?
Although, anything that they build is going to be?
At a such a different?
Hundred foot down.
Level, right, but still?
Yes.
Okay.
More so for my neighbor.
Comments or questions from board members?
So basically, all the, all of your property that was on the neighbor's side has already been removed now. Everything, you had some?
There was a garage that was straddling the property line onto his neighbors.
Correct, and that has been removed.
That has been removed, yes.
Okay, so there's no, so basically, your, your lot lines are pretty clear, there's no?
That's correct.
Sure in the neighbors?
That's correct, yes.
We cleaned it up. It's taken a couple of months, but we've cleaned it up.
So the only thing I'm really considering now then is option?
One.
One.
Yes.
Would you have marked as one B actually, right?
Option one is, there's two parts to that. There's building B, which is the attached garage.
Okay.
And then building A is that existing two-story structure that?
It's about twenty feet away from, or nineteen feet away from the lot.
That's what you want to have there?
Yes, I want to?
Okay, so then you need a variance for structure A, it's, it's there already, correct?
Correct.
You understand that?
Correct.
B is a new proposed garage, and you need the variance for those setback variances.
Correct.
Okay. I can cross everything else out here.
The breezeway, Mary, is allowed to be considered as an attached garage?
As long as it's habitable space, heated.
So define what you mean by breezeway.
Breezeway is anything it has to be to make it an attached structure.
Good answer.
I understood it to be, it has to have a, a foundation and a roof structure.
And walls.
And walls.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I guess Scott sometimes says heated, but?
I mean, you guys must, he'll need a building permit, he'll have to go out and inspect it, so. Okay. All right, are we up for public hearing?
Okay, and so the dirt road that's in the back that's shown, doesn't exist, you don't use that dirt road at all, you only, you are proposing to use the new?
Yes, yes, that, that dirt road will be gone, in fact, it's pretty much gone now.
Okay, so I'm okay. It's option A, you're preferred of.
Is that a motion for public hearing?
Yeah, move that this be put on for public hearing for June ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we'll see you next month. Pam will give you your instructions for your sign. All right, item number ten, Appeal three seven two-one, White Pond Center Association. Steven, sorry, I didn't want, don't want to get his name wrong again. Grechik, is that how we greet? Representing White Pond Center Association, two seventy-five White Pond Road, Stormville, which is operated by John and Bobby Ryerson, is requesting an interpretation of sections one ninety-four dash one twenty-one and one ninety-four dash one twenty-three of the zoning ordinance for a non-residential use in a residential district. Nobody here. For this, do I have a motion to put this on for second call?
Yes.
It might be midnight, but? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Item number eleven, Appeal three seven?
I'm sorry, I dropped, I'm going to leave.
Oh, okay.
We're all the neighbors who wanted to see what the story was.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, they're not here.
Yeah.
I'll do, it's going to be coming back as a second call, so if you show up, kind of.
Wait, but you can watch us on TV. You don't have to stay there, because it's not a public hearing this evening, okay? But if, if, if what they present makes sense, then at such time, we would schedule a public hearing.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Because we'll get all the horses ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They must have changed their buck.
Except for our horses.
Item number 11, Appeal 3722, Stewart Shops Corporation, Stewart Shops Corporation, Saratoga Springs, New York, is requesting a 59-foot front line variance for a proposed canopy over proposed gas pumps at 1850 Route 52, Hopeful Junction, pursuant to Note 11 of the Schedule of Local Regulations, the property is in the ownership of Scanlon. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thanks. I do want to just make a couple notes. I'm going to ask that you not have it there, it's over there for a reason.
No, it's...
You are actually blocking neighbors who may want to see what it is that you're proposing. Okay, so please, thank you. That's a better location. I'm sorry, that's my, I don't know what's going on, but... The, just for the purposes of the neighbors, I understand there was some concern that we did the lead agency approval for the planning board to be lead agency a little too quickly last month. I want to make sure that everyone is aware that the possibility of another agency challenging and being successful with the challenge of a lead agency determination is, like, probably next to nil. The Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Conservation makes that determination in the event that one board wants to challenge another board's request to be lead agency. And even in a recent decision where one town wanted to take over land from another town and the other town challenged lead agency, they upheld that the original, the town wanting the land was able to be lead agency. So the ability to challenge a lead agency status is, is very, very limited. So given that, when this board gets the request for another board in the town to be lead agency, knowing that we'll have the opportunity to provide comments on any such site plan review, et cetera, we don't necessarily challenge that determination, it just wouldn't make sense, since generally speaking, that board is already reviewing site plan and other issues. That being said, before the plan, before the zoning board, sorry, at this point, is just specific the issues related to the variance that you're going to discuss with us this evening. Whether there should be a gas station here or not is not an issue for this board. I understand that there's a little bit of confusion, again, about the fact that previously, the last time this site was up for review, it was the zoning board's prerogative or their obligation to review the special permit for a gas station. The code has changed since that time, it is no longer the purview of the zoning board to do that review. All we are here to do is to look at the request for variances based on the review that's being done right now by the planning board. We have the right to do a review if we, based on our just understanding what it is that you're asking for, we would schedule a public hearing. This, by the way, is a legally public, publicly noticed meeting with, where the public is allowed to review the opportunity to see what we're seeing, and the public will have the opportunity to participate in the dialogue and give us any comments they wish at such time as we schedule a public hearing. With that being said...
Good evening, I'm Chuck Marshall, the real estate representative from Stewart Shops. We are here tonight seeking a 59-foot variance from the Route 52, 100-foot setback. This project has gone through a number of iterations. Stewart Shops submitted a as-of-rite plan where the building was oriented differently, which met all the setbacks, both from 52 and the abutting residential properties. In reviewing the plan, the traffic study completed by HVEA indicated that it's probably best to abandon the eastern spur of Fishkill Hook Road and bring Hook Road to a T-intersection with 52 that would run along the eastern side of the project site. Because of that, with the configuration and the remaining developable land we are left with, that is commercially zoned, or appropriately zoned commercial, we need the variance. So we've tried a number of designs to move the canopy in the building, and unfortunately in this instance, what we're left with from a buildable area is what you see before you.
Okay.
So what's going to happen on the lot that is gravel on the other side that is your property?
That's not before us for review.
Oh.
Okay, we have to be really careful about what it is that's our discussion, okay? So all we're here for is the, related to the variances, which in essence is the placement of, you know, the...
The canopy.
The canopy, exactly. For the board's attention, this was referred to Dutchess County Planning Development, and in essence, they're, we'll read it onto the record at such time as a public hearing is, but in essence, their recommendation is, you don't, we don't need to give the variance because it should be closer to the residences in the rear, which I'm sure when, at such time as we have a public hearing, the residents may want to comment on that. So in the event that the board wishes to bring it farther away from the residences and bring it closer to the road, it would require a supermajority on our part to override Dutchess County's recommendation. But it's way preliminary at this point, I just want to pull your attention to the fact that Dutchess County is not recommending the variances. So I think at this point, it's important for us to get public comment on it, because obviously, I think the location, whether we approve variance or not, we should be hearing from the neighbors.
Thank you.
About that. All right, so...
Motion to advertise.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll see you next month.
And then that, does that open the public hearing or just advertises?
Open the public hearing.
Okay, and that's June 9th?
Yeah, correct.
Yes. Pam will give you information for your sign. Yes, ma'am?
May we be allowed to speak about the Stewart Shop?
Next month. Yes, you will be next month.
Okay, but we can't say anything tonight?
Not this evening, no.
Okay.
Okay, next month.
When the public hearing begins.
Right, item number 12, Appeal 3725, Leaf, Joel and Janice Leaf, 163 Hillside Lake Road, Wapengers Falls, are requesting a 2-foot variance for a 6-foot vinyl fence, which is approximately 60 feet long, to be installed along their property line on Hillside Lake Road pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
I did have the opportunity to go out and meet with the Leafs at their property on Sunday evening, thank you for accommodating my, my request. So I do have some pictures for the board, just to refresh everybody's memory, I have a house that is literally 15 feet away from Hillside Lake Road. There's a utility easement we determined that literally goes right from the road to your house line. There are some lilacs, bushes along the roadway, there is a guardrail, and there's a tall evergreen there, a tall pine tree. So there is some amount of screening there, but there's no question that times have changed since you moved in there over 40 years ago, I think you said.
Eighteen.
Oh, eighteen, okay, I'm sorry. We were talking about multiple things there. So I did just want to, for the board, let me just bring you a couple pictures about what we saw. Oh, let me get at it. I don't need to take pictures now.
Can I interrupt you just for a second?
Sure, of course.
My wife would like to say something before you stop.
Just to maybe save you some trouble, where you looked on our right side of the property as you're facing the road, we decided not to put the fence on that side.
On that side, okay.
It's too restrictive as to where...
Yeah, and one panel, one or two panels is going to look a little weird then.
Wasn't going to look...
Okay.
We still would like to put it on the left side of the house.
Okay.
Where we have hundreds of feet before the next property line, 15 feet back off of the, to allow for the easement, Central Hudson, and then there's the issue of the patio when you're ready for that, but we're not going to do it on the right.
So this side that was closest to the driveway next door is the side you don't want it there now?
That's correct.
You don't want it there, okay. Just, just to give the board members some sense though, the topography change is so significant to go down there, that headlights go right over the guardrail and would be going probably right into the second floor bedrooms. This is now down on their patio looking up, so again, when you're down here, you don't see it necessarily, you hear the noise and you hear the traffic, but it is definitely, and you see there is some lilacs, there is some screening there, but there is definitely where some clear areas. This is their patio looking back to their property, this is all of their property here, and their neighbor just has more of a floor lot, so it just runs all the way down. These are just the pine trees next to them. This is the other side of your house. Why, hold on one second, I've got to figure out...
We should take it by accident.
No, no, no. Okay, this is the other side of the house that we're now talking about where they'd like to pursue it. Again, here's the guardrail and there's another bedroom, and so this is where the top story is at grade, and so even though there are lilacs there, lilacs obviously lose their leaves during the winter, so this is where they'd still like to continue to put some length of fencing now.
About 24 feet.
About 24 feet, probably only about three panels.
That's correct.
So it is definitely still clear that there's, again, this is, we're 15 feet away from the roadway, so such a request, I think, makes sense, because especially if you're going to line it up right with your house.
Correct.
And the traffic, even on Sunday night at 7 o'clock, 7:15, whatever it was...
Significant.
It was still significant, I was, I mean, you see, I even got, they're standing there on the road with me, and a truck goes by and, right, we're standing there, so, you know, it was, there was definitely...
Motion to advertise.
Okay. But you're going to work out the utility easement, you're going to keep it out of the easement, that's the important thing.
That's correct, we'll go at least 15 feet, even 16 feet back.
Okay.
And there, we talked to them, they're 15 feet.
Okay, the other issue we have to resolve, before we advertise, is their patio.
Correct.
I showed you the picture of the patio that's down below. The concern is that we have two different surveys, one that literally shows the edge of the patio might be their property line.
Two feet, yeah.
Or there might be, or there might be two feet more, right, but remember, they were two feet between the addition and the patio, so we might have, because the patio is 13 feet, we might have lost the two feet there. So we have to address the patio and the fact that it's so close to their property line.
Correct.
Okay, it is, it's a small patio, it was only the 13 feet, and they do have a row of trees right along their neighbor's driveway, which is why they were thinking their property line was further out. They actually told me they paid $1,000 to have a tree removed, but...
Correct. Our neighbors...
The neighbors thought that their tree, probably wasn't even their tree. So, yeah, so there's definitely, I can understand where the confusion comes from, they have one survey that showed 26 feet and change to the, to the property line, and another that showed 15, so, you know, it was not clear, and so what we said was, we need to err on the side of caution. They are trying to sell their home, they've been trying to sell it for a couple, for two years, I think they said, so it is something that I can understand, having a fence would be, would probably help the house to sell. So I want to be clear though, that we need to address the patio as well, and so...
We did not, I know it doesn't matter, but we didn't build the patio, you know, about 20, 22 years.
You can tell by age of it.
It's not in stone or cement, it's late, late on gravel.
Yeah.
So...
So with that said, and knowing that probably at most, the patio is probably two feet away from the property line, they need a 13-foot variance for the patio, all right? And we will get the measurements of that patio, because I just want to be clear that that patio doesn't get expanded at any point.
Okay.
Okay?
Motion to advertise.
And we'll follow up with Pam to make sure we have everything correct.
Correct.
Okay, second?
Sorry, how long of a fence now, if they're not...
Three panels would be 20, say 25 feet, just to give them...
So we need to pick up the 16 foot.
Yes. And only on, we got to get...
The left side of our houses, we face Hillside Lake Road.
Well, yeah, but if it's on Hillside Lake Road, it's the right side of that, well, I'll have to figure out how do we actually say which side of the house it is, okay? I'll look with you on the noticing of that. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pam will give you your notice for your sign, and then we'll see you next month.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you. All right, item number 12, Appeal 37, nope, sorry, that was you guys, item number 13.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening. 3726 Casali, Catherine Casali, 1 Kennedy Boulevard, Hopeful Junction, requesting a 13-foot front line variance for an existing 10-foot by 12-foot shed, which is in front of the rear line of the house, and a 24-foot rear line variance for an existing 8-foot by 8-foot shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. No, Casali, do I have a motion for second call?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Try again. Item number 14, Appeal 3729, Waligunda, sorry if I'm saying that wrong.
Waligunda.
Waligunda, thank you. Barbara Waligunda, 15 Pinewood Road, is requesting a 2-foot variance for an existing 6-foot fence, which is located in front of the rear line of the dwelling, as well as a variance to allow a 20-foot by 20-foot detached garage to be located in front of the rear line of the dwelling pursuant to Sections 194-98 and 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Pam, do we want to excuse the... Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the first time we're seeing your application, so if you don't mind taking us through what you're looking for, there's an existing fence, did you install this fence?
Yes.
You did, okay, how long ago did you install it?
In 2003.
Okay. And?
And the shed was built in 1991.
And this is a shed or a...
And I have photographs, it's a shed.
And did you put the shed up as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The shed is a 20 by 20 fixed structure, and we are in, I should say that the size of the shed is required, we live on 13 and a half acres of property, so in order to service that amount of property, the equipment that's needed is significant. You know, lawnmowers, fertilizers, tractors, snow blowers, et cetera. So my husband actually put that up, my husband is now deceased, so I'm going forward with permits, thinking that, you know, and variances, because I thought all of this was addressed in the past.
Okay, surprise.
Oh, yeah. Big surprise.
Aye.
I also have a lot of pictures that I had submitted with my application, I don't know if you have seen them.
We don't have them with our copy, but if they're in the file, we can, yeah, we can take a look at them.
Okay.
But let's just understand, your shed...
Oh, there I go. Here they are. Hold on. I don't have it with mine.
I got these.
Okay, I'm sure.
I don't have it, that's okay.
It's a little bit special.
So you have, you have the, you're showing us where the, your septic tank is, your fields are, and then your shed off to the side there that is on the property line, is over the property line, what is...
Are you looking at...
I'm looking at the little shed while...
The side of the light here?
No, are you...
Did he enjoy it?
No, they weren't here.
He didn't look at the sound.
Maybe help if I look at the right application.
Oh, okay.
He said the application was, were you? It was a no show? Here we are. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, now we're...
Now we're looking.
Oh, okay.
All right, so now... Okay, yeah, you're definitely... What is, what's the fence though? The 24 feet, you have a fence that goes over your property line, what's the 24 feet going over?
I, I live on a total of 13 and a half acres, and there are three subdivided lots. The lot that the house sits on is 5.22 acres.
Okay.
And then next to that is another lot, also owned by me, that's four acres and 4.06 acres, and then there's a third lot, which is also owned by me, that's...
Are there homes? Are there other residences?
No, they're all, no, they're all owned by me and there's only one.
Two, no, it's four point oh-six.
Yes.
Thanks.
Right, but can she, well, I guess if she owns the property, she can have a fence that crosses over, right, Mary? Because it's just her fence on another property.
No, because it's a separate property, they have a separate, but it's not going over the line, is it?
It is, it is going over the line.
Yes.
Well, I'm looking at it going over.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the last two sections of the fence are on, cross the line, but they're still on my property.
Is there only one access to all these properties?
Right now, yes.
No, two. The other one's on Biken Hall.
You got Pinewood Road and Biken.
Well, the, the home is on Fifteen Pinewood, then there's frontage to put a driveway in, sixteen Pinewood, but that's not there yet. And then there's another property and the access road would be down on forty-four Biken Hill.
I missed Pinewood Road there coming up and ending at two of the properties.
Okay.
Okay, I thought, I thought two that. Without seeing Pinewood Land Lot, that surprised me. Okay.
We just need to be clear whether this is on.
passing over our property?
Yes. I have a, actually, this is a different map. It's a border health map, but it shows all three lots together.
Okay, right, we have that.
So it's going.
This is the, the margin we have here.
Just be careful.
Where is the fence across the line? Where's your fence?
This is the house right here. All right, we're the garage. Okay, this is the block top driveway. The fence is here and it, it comes back here. All right, so this is Fifteen Pinewood where our house is located. This is sixteen Pinewood.
And the entrance is from Pinewood for both of these properties?
Yes.
Okay.
And then this lot here would have, comes out on Biken Hill Road and this lot was originally part of a family estate and it's since been sold and under different, you know, so this lot is no longer part of it. So the fence starts here on Fifteen Pinewood property and the last two sections cross over and they are on sixteen Pinewood. But all of this is owned by me.
But it's a separate parcel?
Yes.
A six-foot fence has to be two feet in from a property line. So it can't cross the line. Why do you need the fence there?
We have a shed, the shed that was built and for aesthetic purposes, I can step back down.
Well, later we'll try and understand.
For aesthetic purposes. My husband was an architectural engineer and a designer and he was really very specific as far as doing it to conceal the shed so that when he came up for aesthetic purposes, it wasn't obtrusive or offensive in any way.
So you're just looking to hide the shed?
To hide the shed, yeah. And then also the width of the fence was very specific so that angles from different areas of the property that it offered balance. The house is shaped like an L, so to put a shed.
So let's start, can we move the, can we move the shed back?
No, the shed is twenty by twenty and it's a fixed structure.
You mean, but it's a picture, is that concrete floor and?
And floor.
So why isn't it a garage?
It's not a garage.
Why do you say it's not a garage?
It has a garage door.
Yeah.
That's to get the tractor.
Yeah. But why, what's the distinction in your mind between a shed and a garage?
I mean, it's got a dry, paved roadway going right up to it.
That's the garage.
That's the shed you put together?
Well, she says it's a shed, I think it's a garage. You don't need a variance for the garage then, right?
What's stored in it?
Tractor, lawnmower, car, leaf blowers, snowmobiles.
I would consider it a garage.
Because then we don't need it, right? You can put a garage in.
What kind of floor does it have in it?
Concrete.
Concrete, eight inches.
It's a floor. I mean, it's garage. We're just trying to save you trouble here.
Stop arguing with me.
She wants to tell me.
No. And well, then, I mean, I understand maybe from his perception, but if it's going to be an issue, why don't you just put some shrubbery or something hide the garage? Maybe some evergreen trees.
I didn't think that the shed was really the issue. I thought it was on the side of the, the house versus in the rear.
You have a problem. If we call it a garage, you're all saying, forget about this. So the only thing we're going to talk about.
Well, yeah, talk about the fence.
Okay.
So there's some issue with legally you.
No.
The question is whether you can legally go across your, your property line.
All right, let's give you, let's give you this back and then you can go back to the microphone, just so that anybody who needs to can hear you.
Okay, and you do have to.
Okay, don't you?
Okay, well.
Can we have a fence crossing, it's not two feet in.
Right.
Because it's running perpendicular.
She owns one piece of property though also, right?
Right, it's a separate distinct tax parcel. It's a separate, it has a separate tax.
She sells it.
I mean, if you sell that lot, right, that's, that's going to be the issue.
Well, actually, but we're looking to list the house in the next five days.
Oh, so you're going to sell the house?
Yes, and we are planning on putting the house on the market with the, the house with the five acres and the adjoining four acres. So the fifteen and sixteen Pinewood properties together and then the forty-four Biken Hill property.
Then you have to combine that.
As a separate one.
Are you going to combine that to make it the nine acres, the five and the four?
We would still keep it as two separate subdivisioned properties, but they would be sold together.
I'm not sure why you want to.
Separate property, you can have accessory structures on a.
Might be a title problem.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're going to be raised. Many other issues are raised.
If it's two lots.
Yeah.
You've got a structures on another lot.
Right, I've been in touch with our attorney who's representing us on the sale of the house, Jake Cantor, and he had indicated that, you know, depending on how the town felt about this, that we could get an easement in place, retain an easement for that.
It's one way.
We can't issue a building permit for it because a six-foot fence has to be two feet in from the property line. So on each side of the property, it would have to.
It's part of the doorway.
The other problem is that you can't, cannot have an accessory structure on a vacant piece of property. There would have to be a house first.
Exactly.
I'm not sure why you want to do this.
I would take the fence down if I were you, especially if you're selling the property.
Oh, so the fence is already up?
And the fence is, you know, I feel really passionate about this because my husband.
But you're selling the property.
I, I think if the owner wanted to do it, I'd be.
Well, the other problem, the other problem you can do is put it on the market for sale and tell them there's a, there's a legal issue with it and it needs to be addressed.
It's going to be a legal entitlement for it. When they do a survey inspection, it's going to be found.
Right.
If they don't like the fence, they can just say, take it down. It's not yours anymore to worry, agonize over.
This is all, this is all the money that's gone.
No.
It's a violation on the property right now. There's a fence without a permit, we can't issue the permit because it doesn't meet.
That's what I'm saying. They're going to put it on the market and I'll disclose that there's a violation and they'll decide what they want to do with it.
It'll be the negotiation. Yeah, I mean, that's a simple solution.
I'm agreeing with you that it's a violation and the owner's going to decide whether they take it with a violation.
But the town, the bank's not going to accept it. If the bank's going to issue a mortgage, they're not going to get accepted with a violation.
They just accept it under the, under the.
I'd take it down.
The thing is.
Save yourself a trouble here.
So would I.
The five, the four.
Because you have to wait for us to do a public hearing, so it's going to, you know.
It's going to exist anyways. If you, if you put it on the market in five days and make somebody comes in in three days that says, I want to buy it, you're faced with the exact problem I'm talking about.
Right.
Yeah, to remove the fence, there's also landscaping in front of it, there's retaining, you know, a blue stone.
You don't have to remove all that.
You don't have to.
Just two feet, I'm sorry. I think Mr. Cantor.
They have to use the panels that are.
Yeah, the turn, the landscape I'm talking about. Or two floors on the side of the lot.
The fence is up right now and it doesn't deserve the two feet setback right now.
Right.
So you have to take it, or to take down the, the fence that's on the other property up to two feet in on your property?
Or another solution is to just combine the two lots and have nine, sell, you know, nine acres.
But that may reduce the value.
The value.
If I'm looking at that, I'm going to say, I want to buy both lots, but in the future I can sell one. If I combine it, I can't do that.
Right, if you do a merger deed.
That's what it looks like.
Well, I understand that. Again, we're trying to give you solutions. Right, right now, the Department of. What do you should do, tell your attorney, call that attorney to start the discussion then.
Oh, we don't have a.
They don't have a buyer yet.
Well, whoever that attorney is going to be, for the buyer.
Well, we don't have a buyer.
I know, but when it occurs, we have a discussion. So I want to know that's subject to the comments of our review by this board. And call it a garage.
They can make a decision, they can combine the lots.
One of the attorneys.
Or you can sit and take it down.
The attorney says.
They're not acting in their attorney capacity, John.
No, no, but I'm saying.
He said one of the attorneys up here said.
Don't do a merger deed. The vendor's a good advice.
You can't do a tour easement, can you, John? I mean, it's crossing a property, it's a structure crossing a property.
I agree with Mary.
And it's a structure, accessory structure.
They can look, yeah. So. She's been reprimanded on the issues now.
Yeah, do you want us to continue?
Um.
I would ask for a refund.
What are my, what are my options? I mean.
Take down the fence. Some portion of the fence that's on the neighbors, the neighboring property and up to two feet on your property.
Okay.
You don't have to touch anything else.
You still have to get a permit for it because it's over four feet.
Right, well, yeah, that's true. So you still need to continue then if you want to leave up the rest of the fence.
Where's this?
With the building department. She just needs a building.
You can't even see the fence from the wall.
I know, but isn't this behind the house? This is behind the house, isn't it?
It is behind the house. They still need a building permit. Any fence over four feet height requires a building permit and it can only be located in.
They don't get a variance.
But this is saying it's, the fence is in front of the rear line of the dwelling?
The fences?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, well, then they need a variance.
Right. So if you take down the fence completely, you don't need to see us anymore. If you're going to leave some portion of the fence.
Right.
Two feet in, then we need to continue the process, but we're only going to talk about the fence that's on this lot.
All right, so if I take the last two sections down?
Anything that's in front of.
No, no, anything that's on the neighboring lot.
Right, anything.
Anything in front of the rear line.
Whatever crosses.
No, that's what she's here for variance for.
Is all of it in front of the rear line now?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Okay, we'll get the survey.
Take down the two sections of the fence.
On the next door property.
On the next property. And then, then I have to go for a variance because of the location in the front.
Of the rear line, all right.
Okay.
So that's what you want to continue with?
Yes.
Okay.
And now this is a shed and not a garage?
No, it's a garage and not a shed.
It's a garage again?
Yeah.
It's a garage.
So I can be inside doors, so you don't need a variance for that.
It's anchored into the concrete with a garage door.
Where's, where's this fence again? Why is?
The fence is unfortunately. I need to look at the picture.
It's here. There's the house, so it's on the side of the house. It's in front of the rear line. That's why.
Okay.
Since I'm looking at the right side right now.
I don't.
All right, so a motion to advertise for the portion of the fence that will be on this lot.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pam, we'll give you your sign instructions.
Okay.
But you're going to need to take down that other portion of the fence.
Okay.
Okay?
And there's no way to accommodate that through an easement from the building department perspective?
Okay. Okay.
You'd have to do a lot line realignment. You're talking money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Change the plot realignment.
Right. Right, so we're taking off this garage.
I'll eat it, burn it.
And the fence is for only on this lot. All right, item number fifteen, appeal three seven three zero, Byrne, Peter Byrne, Twenty-four Tiger Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming house built in nineteen fifty-eight pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So your house already exists, you're not doing anything to the house?
Nope.
Okay. Motion to advertise? We're going to have to move his house.
So moved.
I'm so sorry, you had to see you for the last couple hours.
It was interesting.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
We're not going to have you move a house that's pre-existing.
They said we were going to love this.
Wow, how old is the house? How long was it?
Fifty-eight, so it's standing on sixty years old.
Before zoning existed. So that makes sense, that's fine. Okay. Pam, we'll give you your instructions for your sign and then we'll see you for public hearing next month.
All right.
Wow, they could only be so easy, like that. Appeal, item number sixteen, appeal three seven three one, Kenna, Joseph Kenna, Five Thirty-Eight Hosner Mountain Road, Stormville, is requesting a twenty-one-foot rear line variance for an existing in-ground pool, a forty-five rear line, foot rear line variance for a proposed thirty-four foot by twenty-two foot detached garage pursuant to sections one ninety-four dash ninety-five and one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
We had you here a couple years.
I know.
Okay.
I'm a slacker.
Okay, and so since then you've had a survey of your property done and we have, we find that there are certain things on your property that are not exactly in conformance with setbacks.
Yes.
So we have to deal with those.
Okay.
Okay, so the pool is in.
Yes.
How long has the pool been in? Did you put it in and how long?
Yeah, it's probably been in about, I don't know, let's say thirteen years, fourteen years, something like that.
Does the pool have a permit?
It has a permit, it does not have a certificate of compliance because the setback.
Okay. There's a portion of the patio that extends on your neighbor's property?
Yes, I had Bailey and Watson come out. They, they made the marks actually last week on each corner of that patio, so we'll cut that back.
You're going to cut it back to where?
I'll cut it back to the edge of the property.
To the edge of the property line.
Yeah. Really, really you're looking at four and a half feet on the corner because it kind of runs on an angle. That property is kind of odd shaped. So running across that back patio at the corner of the pool would be about four and a half feet. Then it gets wider on each end.
Okay, can I ask a question? When you applied for the pool permit, where did you state on the permit that the pool was going to go?
Not where it is, I believe.
I don't, I didn't look at that permit.
Can we take a look at that? If we know next month, just where was it expected to go?
Was the date of the permit?
Yeah, would the, kind of tell us a little bit how long ago that was, because I know at one point pools were allowed, you know, only needed a ten-foot setback instead of.
That was eighty.
No, I know, it's a while ago. I don't think it meets the thirteen years that he's talking about now, because it sounds like he put it in.
It's put in in nineteen ninety-eight according to this.
Oh, okay, so it's been a little bit more than thirteen years.
But it still would require twenty-five feet.
But it's still, right, it still requires the twenty-five feet, but that would be helpful in our review that it's, it's been that long. Okay, did you explore doing a lot line realignment with your neighbor? We discussed this with everybody who has a similar issue.
Yeah, I know. I haven't even met with him on it. I can do that, but I just figured because.
That's supposed to happen the last time?
Yes.
And he went away for two years?
Well, he was supposed to get a survey last time.
He was going to get a lot line revision too, I thought.
Okay.
He was going to buy that property.
Yeah, I, I did talk about that, but I just didn't do anything, as you know. That That being said, that's why I had the drawing done and put that cut on there, just so at least you file the permits, so at least we can get the board rolling in the right direction. There's a bunch of other items on the list, obviously, vehicles on the property. Two of them are gone. One of them I have a quantity of the vehicle to try to get a new title for, just to have nothing on the computer for the box trucks that sits there. That's my vehicle that I wanna keep. Shed was addressed that's being taken down, that's attached to a trailer that I have there. Now, keep in mind that the garage that I put on that drawing, and obviously we spoke about this last time, will allow me to get rid of that, you know. I have a bit of storage, so I would be out of there, and I would just put the garage in that exact spot, pretty much.
What's the square footage of a garage that's thirty-four by twenty-two?
I'm not sure.
Maybe you know.
Seven forty-eight.
Right under.
Right under seven fifty.
So we don't have to worry about the seven fifty. Wow, that was perfect. Okay.
I think we must have saw that somewhere, right?
Yeah, really.
Smart slacker. You have an under a tree house. What does that mean?
What's that?
You have on the, sorry, frame treehouse?
Yeah, the treehouse for my kids.
Okay, and then you have a ramp that's going up, and then you've got a chicken coop underneath there?
That's true.
You have chickens in it?
Yeah. We spoke about that last time. Right?
Okay.
Chickens are only allowed on parcels of ten acres or something like that.
Right. So we have an issue with chickens. And is the coop in compliance?
If you don't have chickens, you don't need a coop.
Well, that's true.
But the rabbit hutches...
Rabbit hutch.
I don't know if they meet setback, because the survey is cut off right here. Well, the rear line, the rear line, they definitely don't meet.
But the rabbit hutch, you can move a rabbit hutch.
Yeah, they're movable. I mean, the kids have rabbits over the years. I think there's two of these. These are, they're old.
Yeah, but you can...
I'm not expecting them to last much longer, but they've, you know, definitely outlived their normal lifespan.
But rabbit hutches, you can pick up and move.
Yes.
They need to be twenty-five feet, though. The swing set is a structure and has to be twenty-five feet, so it is a rabbit hutch. Now, also, I said that we need to get the setback for the swing set, because that has to be twenty-five.
No, the swing set's been there for, before the pool, and there also is a requirement to put it against the house.
Well, it requires a twenty-five-foot setback, so...
We don't know where it is. We don't have measurements of it.
Is the framed treehouse actually in a tree?
Yes.
So it's not on the ground. Is that considered a structure?
In a treehouse? No.
Yeah, it's not.
That's not considered a structure.
Right, so we don't have to worry about that.
That's why I asked. Is it actually in a tree?
Good, good question. You took care of that one. So we're gonna move the hutches, the rabbit hutches, but play Jim, we need to get the, we need to understand how far they are in from your property lines.
But he didn't put that on the drawing?
No.
Now, he has the, treehouse is ten point eight feet away. They didn't actually mark the jungle gym, so it's gonna be close. I don't know about the frame steps where they're going.
Wait a minute. I'm trying to picture that treehouse. I gotta go take another look, because it seems to me like that was just kind of on top of something else. I don't remember it being in a tree exactly.
The treehouse is in a tree?
Yeah. It's on two trees.
I'm trying to picture it, and I can't picture it at this point.
You got the frame steps going up, frame ramp.
Well, I am a carpenter. I'd rather my kids go up a ramp than climb up a tree on a ladder, you know. I mean, that's dangerous.
No, but it's setback regardless.
Sorry, has the outdoor storage been removed on your neighbor's property?
Outdoor storage.
It looks like you have an area that's defined as outside storage.
They had the lattice and stuff back there.
Oh, maybe you heard back. Yeah, and obviously with the patio, you got the lattice fence, so that's obviously, if I'm gonna cut that back, that would happen. There was a boxing ring we talked about, that's gone.
Yeah, that's gone.
A couple of vehicles that we talked about, those are gone. There was a patio. She had some pavers over the line. Those are gone.
It looks like this outside storage connects the proposed garage with the pool area.
Yeah, you know, because I have a movable trailer there, and with that, I attached a patio. I attached just kind of a makeshift shed to it. So, I mean, I'm gonna take that down this weekend, so...
Oh, good answer.
It's on my list.
So that's all this is talking about. You got trailer, frame shed, polyvinyl chloride shed. That's all coming out?
Yeah, so my proposal is to put a garage there, and I take all the junky-looking stuff out of it, right?
If that will clean this up, I might be for that.
And the driveway has to be moved back onto Hosner Mountain Road. He comes in off of Lee Town Road now. His address is 538 Hosner Mountain Road. If there's an emergency at the property...
They're not gonna find you.
They're not, no.
Well, actually, we had an emergency on New Year's, and they came right to the front of the house and knocked on the door. But besides that, I did have a driveway in the front, and I had a gravel which I put a thousand dollar deposit on, okay? Which I had, I guess you had it to retain the deposit, right? So then I put the other driveway in.
Great.
The town came and inspected it, and gave me my thousand bucks back. That was way back when. So, I mean, and I had to close it off, which I did. I put a wall up there.
Well, then now this becomes his front yard where his pool is, if that's what he wants to count. We had this meeting with him. He has to put the driveway back on, because his address is 538 Hosner Mountain Road. Now, all this stuff that's in the rear yard becomes the front yard.
Well, it becomes the side yard.
Well, if any... I mean...
Good question. As a side yard.
Yeah.
It doesn't have much of a front yard.
No, it's an odd shaped piece of property.
Where was the driveway before, and can you put it back?
No, I would never put it back.
I'm pretty sure that the end of that meeting was determined that he had to put it back.
I have a pool, no, absolutely not. I have a pull-out, pull-over space in front of my house, so you can pull a car right in there. People park up there all the time. When the ambulance came to my house, they parked right there.
And is there a path?
On New Year's Eve.
Is that where the path is to your front door?
And there's my mailboxes there, my double-foot doors are right there, and I have a straight path going right down to the mailbox.
You got a stone mason area retaining wall?
Yes, I do.
That's what he said. He put up a wall.
No, I just said I had to close it off, and I put up the wall. Because I couldn't have a driveway in two locations, and they gave me back my thousand dollars, because I blacktopped it.
I don't know. I don't know that it's required.
That's beyond us. If the building department signed off on the other driveway.
We didn't. It would be the highway department.
Highway department.
Well, sorry, yeah.
Should investigate it.
Alright.
There was somebody from the fire department.
Let's get a little bit more information about the driveway, whether that's gotta move or not. In the meantime, though, you're going to remove all the stuff in that area there, the trailer, the shed, etcetera. You're gonna get us the measurement for the jungle gym equipment? Okay? Just so we can be sure whether that needs a variance or not. We'll resolve the issue with the driveway. And, I mean, your neighbor's gonna get a notice of the public hearing anyway. It might make sense to have a conversation with them about whether you can do the lot line realignment and not need all this.
Okay. Yeah, I just, in all fairness, I just never did.
Understood.
So when I got this, I just said, you know, let me do a drawing.
But they're gonna get a notice anyway of this.
Yeah, no, they know that. They know that.
Might as well have the conversation with them, so that when they get this, they're not questioning, what in the world is this about? Alright, and then we'll see you again next month for another review.
There's some things that have to be put in public.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
The patio itself will need a setback, because now it's right up to the line.
Well, no, I understand. He's gonna cut it back. He can't cut it back a whole lot more than that.
I know, but it has to be advertised.
We just put a review.
We're not advertising. We're talking about advertising it. We're gonna do another review. I'm suggesting he have a discussion with his neighbor about a lot line realignment.
Oh, okay.
Is this just put it over for review or not?
Yeah, I think we need to see this again and get more measurements and stuff. Mary Ann?
That needed to be...
Well, we need to resolve the issue without the chickens, too.
Right. Well, they're not allowed on...
Well, understood.
...than ten acres.
So, yeah, we need to...
And the existing garage.
How many chickens do you have?
I don't even know. I'll have to ask my wife then. It's her meditation, you know?
One point five chickens?
Oh, I thought you said eight.
How do you know what I have there?
Wow!
It's a chicken with a nest.
The existing garage only shows, I think it says twenty-five point something feet to the property line also.
Right.
I don't know if that ever had a variance when that was built.
I believe it did, because we kinda changed it to the side. What is it? The side has twenty-five feet, and we... I forget what it was, but it definitely was done on the original permit for that.
Can we check that in the next month? Pam?
Yeah.
Okay.
But then it would also be a part of the...
Well...
Well, it's attached. That one is attached.
Twenty-three point five, hundred and twenty.
Oh, you're right now, if he's gonna use Lee Town Road, that new detached garage is now in the front yard. If Lee Town Road is now his front yard...
Yeah, I'm not really looking to change my address. I've had the address for twenty-something years. You know, and people know where I live. People know my address.
But what is your...
I don't really feel the need that I have to change it, because the fire department doesn't know where my house is.
What's your address?
538 Hosner Mountain Road.
And the house face is Hosner Mountain.
Yes, it does.
That's what she's saying. So if your address is Hosner Mountain, your driveway should be on Hosner Mountain.
Correct.
Yes, but I don't know. But I face both votes.
See, the next point is, sir, and this is why it's an issue still. If you take out all those sheds, that's fine, but you want to put a proposed garage there. You may not be allowed to put your garage if you call Lee Town Road your front yard, because you can't have a garage in your front yard, a detached garage in your front yard. So you're gonna need to think about it. It's really the suggestion of what's better. Do you want your garage there, or do you, and that means moving your driveway, or do you keep your driveway and decide if there's a better place to put your garage?
Otherwise, the only place to put your garage is the top of your pool.
No, that's the spot. That's the spot. I really need to put the garage in the perfect spot. Excuse me. It was up there a little smart.
Make your existing framed garage bigger. I don't know. So you're gonna have to think about what you want.
Yeah, we gotta... Well, we need to resolve the issue with the driveway first.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, you know, like I said, we put, you know, we went back and forth. We talked about what we were gonna do with the driveway. Because the driveway used to come up and around and then after looping the garage, and it was just really bad, because it was all rock there. So that's why we put it on the other side, which now we have a nice long driveway. And then we had, they told us we had to close it off, and we had to blacktop the driveway in order to get our money back, and that's what we did.
Alright, we need to resolve a couple of issues between now and next month, but we will see you next month.
We'll talk in the ninth.
Yes, in the ninth.
Okay, great.
And again, the issues that have been pointed out, I mean, you're gonna move the rabbit hutches for the...
I will do that, yes.
Okay, and I guess, I'd like to see some photograph or something that the treehouse is actually on the tree. The jungle gym dimensions. Lot line realignment with your neighbor issue, if you can resolve it, and then where the...
Chickens.
And the chicken, of course, and where the proposed garage is gonna be in the...
The one and a half chickens.
And then the, you know, again, I guess...
You guys have the drawing that shows pretty much everything on there, right?
Yeah, but it...
And I know you're looking for dimensions on it.
Alright, we just need the dimensions for the jungle gym.
Yeah, so I'll take a better look at that drawing and kinda, whatever, what we're looking for as well.
Beautiful, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, Appeal 3732, Bailey, Samuel Bailey, 41 Lake Walton Road, Robbinger's Falls is requesting a six-foot sideline, sorry, a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed thirty-foot by twenty-two-foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is the first we're seeing your application?
Yes.
And so you're asking for a five-foot sideline variance. Our first question is, why can't you move it over five feet?
Because I'm going up to the next, up to my other garage, the existing garage.
You're gonna have it next to the existing garage?
Attached, one structure or a small space in between?
Uh, I believe small space in between. It's just the corner of the garage that I need the variance.
No, it's not just the corner. It's the fact that you're... It's the corner that encroaches over.
That encroaches over the twenty-five feet, yes.
Why, do you need the space in between, or can you attach it?
That's what the architect I drew up.
The roof line's the wrong way to attach it.
That's what I assumed.
Unless you can reverse the roof line, you go that way. You might be able to still, it speaks to your architect, and the house next to you is right on top of the property line, if this is correct. It's probably, that's probably not correct.
Which, are you just then gonna extend the driveway up so that you'll pull in, the garages are gonna align, garage doors will line up with, do you have existing garage doors on the house now?
Yes, yes.
Mary, if he attaches it, there's a, there's, well, if he attaches it, you eliminate that space in between, and that might bring you in within the setback.
Good. Like attached on the picture here.
I just wanted to make sure everything's covered. I didn't wanna, you know, I don't really, don't even need the five feet. I think it's like four feet, but I just wanted to be sure.
You're actually putting it behind you?
Yes.
Behind it? That's why you move it up?
How much of the separation from the house is it?
I believe it's gonna go right up against it, I was told.
You think it's gonna go against the house?
Yes, you're sure it's gonna go right up against it?
Yeah, the issues change. So if you attach the proposed garage to the existing garage, then the issues get reduced.
If you, you can attach it, because now that I was mistaken where I was thinking you were gonna put it. If you just follow that roof line and keep going back, makes sense to attach it.
Yes.
Why you would want a space.
Looks like it's attached on this picture.
Yeah, it kinda looks like it is attached.
That's what I was, thought I was gonna have, yes.
Okay, so attached, okay, so then we need to talk about the dimensions of it, and why do you need it to be that size? Are you looking for it to be a double bay? What's the...
Double bay, yes.
How many garages do you already have?
Two.
Two garages?
Two, two-door garages, yes. One garage with two doors.
Sorry, no, within the existing house, he's got two garages.
Four bays, basically, and...
You're not running a business or anything like that over this?
No.
For lawn equipment?
Cleaning up everything outside.
Are you okay with it?
There's a shed, I think, in the back.
There's two sheds on the property, and one of them, the roof is collapsed.
Yes. I trust, I'm gonna take that, tap it over to the wet detector.
There's also two unregistered vehicles on your property, and you're only allowed one.
Okay, that's, be gone. Right now, there's only one not registered on my property, no.
There's a crown beck in the backyard, and there's one under a tarp in the driveway.
Okay, I forgot about that one, sorry. I was thinking about the court I was there. I'll take care of that. That crown beck will be gone.
Or you can put a plate on it, I mean...
No, it's just, I'm looking to get rid of that. Only try to clean up, so...
Okay, go ahead.
Most stuff's gone. It's easier for me.
Um, just Pam, you need to correct the, right now, we're saying detached, so we're gonna, it is an attached garage, based on the drawing.
Can confirm that. I think it's, we're expecting an attached garage when you come back.
Okay.
Okay, so motion to advertise?
And can you just get some additional dimensions from the architect by any chance?
Dimensions of what?
If it is attached, whether it's gonna be twenty feet or twenty-two feet from the property line?
Well, right now, I believe it's...
It's twenty-six.
Yes, it's due to the order.
Motion to advertise for June ninth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Pam, we'll give you instructions for your sign.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll see you next month. Item number eighteen, Appeal 3733. May, Maylin? Mallon, thank you. Sorry, I don't like to plant same drugs. Antoinette and Robert Mallon, four over Plank Avenue, Hopple Junction, are requesting a two-foot variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in front of the rear line of the house pursuant to Section 194-99 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. So again, first time we're seeing your application. If you can explain to us why it's, why you're looking for the six-foot as opposed to the four-foot fence?
It really comes down to privacy, because we're on the corner lot.
You're on the corner of what?
Corner lot, so we have a road coming this way. We have Miller and Brookline. There is no privacy on the property. You know, I think we're all trying to figure out where is this? Oh, it's indoor with no...
Oh, okay, alright, okay.
It's not a ninety-degree corner. It's a kind of circle behind the house.
So there's a long view, plus the house is up, and the backyard slopes up?
It's probably not really.
Okay, and so your driveway comes out on Brookline?
Right.
And so you're proposing just a fence in a small area, right from the garage?
Yeah, attached garage.
You making a rectangle or...
Yes.
Just like a little fence on the...
About twenty-six feet, like...
Oh, just that little tiny area?
That's it. I'm just looking for a little private area that could...
Let's go out and see.
Table, some big, whatever.
Oh.
And there really isn't any flat, close to a door area on the property, except for right there.
The side yard is the biggest part of the property and the flattest.
Is this what we're talking about?
Yeah, just that little area.
What kind of fence are you talking about there?
We're talking regular, you know...
Solid white vinyl.
Solid white vinyl. These things, just like a normal...
And any screening in front of any bushes or anything like that?
Well, we will, absolutely, okay.
There's no question. You're like in a fishbowl here.
Yes, you kinda are.
There's a tiny shed that's on the side of the house, that if they wanna leave it there, will just require a variance.
A what? You have a tiny shed?
shed on the side.
Yeah, we bought the house, we asked them, because I actually...
Oh, I called to see if I needed a building permit for that, and they said no, because it was four feet by something else.
But it still has to meet the setbacks. It has to be...
Setback of what?
The property line setbacks, and they have, they can only be in the rear yard.
Oh, oh, we'll move it.
We're not seeing where it is on here.
Actually, it's shown on there.
It's in the fence, the proposed one's in there.
And that doesn't meet the side yard setback?
It's, it's, it's not allowed in the side yard. It's over here.
Oh, well, yeah. Oh, well, yeah.
Next to the side of the house, over here.
Right, yeah, it's on the left side of the house.
So as you're redoing, as you're doing this fence, can that move?
We're moving it back, that's the plan anyway.
Move it to the back, okay. Gary, you also mentioned something about an expired building permit for an electrical upgrade?
Yeah.
Yeah, I kind of never showed up, so.
You pulled the permit date, well, of two thousand and fourteen, for an electrical upgrade?
Yeah.
And then what happened?
You closed out the building permit.
Was the work done?
No.
Some of it.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, the major part of it was to upgrade the service.
Was not done. So we paid, um, Central Hudson and partially paid him for the rest of that work and he hasn't come back.
Would you close out that permit?
He didn't come.
Were you putting a new fuse box and everything?
Yeah, we were upgrading.
Yeah.
Was that new breaker panel put in?
No.
So what was done?
He, um, he added the light and he added, um, an outlet to the outside. He fixed something?
So there's still electrical work that was done, it has to be inspected for us to be able to-
Okay, just tell me how I go about doing that.
Call the building department.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's not a problem.
We have a list of approved electrical inspectors and they just have to inspect the work that was done.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, let's get that closed out, please. Well, you got to renew it anyway.
Yeah, we'll wait until we find a decent guy.
Well, no, you have to renew the permit-
Oh, to close it out?
For us to do the public hearing.
Okay.
We can't have any violations on your property, so you have to renew the permit-
The electrical permit.
Between, like in the next couple-
If you, if you're-
You don't have to get the inspection right away, just renew the permit.
You'll get a whole other year to get the work done.
But I can renew the permit myself, I don't need an electrician. Okay, then that's no problem.
Yeah.
I need to add a new electrician quickly too, so you don't waste the money on that.
Yeah. All right, motion advertised?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pam, we'll give you, you'll need instructions for your sign. Nineteen. Appeal three seven three four. I want to say Gary?
It's Goli.
Goli.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Denise Goli is requesting a five-foot rear line variance for an existing house and a nineteen-foot rear line variance for an existing deck at Twenty Francis Drive, Hopeful Junction pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventeen of the zoning ordinance. Okay, so. We have some issues here at your house.
Yes, we do.
Um, your house doesn't have a CO. You aware of this?
Yes, that's what I'm here for, yes.
Oh, okay.
Can't get it until I get the, um, the variance done. It's actually my parents' house.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
My mom is now, um, living with me due to her failing health, so I'm in the process of trying to-
Got to get this cleaned up.
Sell it and get this all cleaned up.
Okay, you had a permit for the deck? Or, sorry, your mom or somebody pulled out a permit for the deck, but it appears the deck might be in the wetland?
Oh, no, not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
It looks like the house is in the wetland.
The house is in the wetland?
The deck, um, is entirely within it, most of the house is and about half the pool. The pool already has a certificate of compliance, the house is, you know-
So you might, your mom might have gotten permission from New York State DEC to do this? We don't know.
This recently took out the permit for the deck when they found out, but it was there without a permit, so I'm sure that the DEC never got, nah, it's not DEC, it's National, it's Army Corps.
Oh, that's right, it's not even, okay.
I have no idea.
Do you know when the deck was built?
It was maybe twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago, I'm not really sure. I know that the, the reason why I'm here though, too, is because the house, uh, is only forty-five feet from the rear, uh, line.
Right.
And it was built by Rieger Homes.
But Mary, I, I think you told me that the deck did not, was not in the two thousand and four area, but it was in the two thousand and nine?
Yes.
Which means that the deck is probably ten years or less.
I can't imagine that, to be honest with you, because I know my son was, was very, very young.
Okay.
There was a deck there when I got married.
It may have been smaller, it just didn't appear, it appears as now, I don't know.
Okay, so how do we proceed with this? Well, all we have to do is deal with the variances-
Right.
And you'll deal with the rest of it.
That's true.
All right, it's an existing house, the house was built what year?
I think it was nineteen sixty-nine.
All right, so we're not going to ask you at this point to move your house again, that's not the issue. Um, and there's an existing deck who, we're saying it's been there probably at least ten years, or thereabouts, you think it's been there even longer?
Well, like I said, I know that there was a deck there when I got married and that's thirty-two years ago, so I know there was a deck there, whether or not that was rebuilt, that I don't know.
Okay.
The deck, now there's a, a roof over that deck, so perhaps that's why it wasn't showing.
Yeah, it's a fourteen by twelve-foot covered deck, we know that, but, um, but we don't think the deck was built with the original house.
No.
The problem is, there was never a permit pulled for the deck. All right. How far back are you in Francis? You're, you're pretty close to the eighty-two, aren't you?
Um-
About halfway back, probably.
Not even halfway, no, no.
Okay.
It's the first house on the left, when you come in.
But it's not on the corner, because there's, there's vacant property in between.
All right, it's an existing house, an existing deck, and it's, you're just trying to clean up a situation.
Trying to get it, right, trying to get it all done, so.
How do we resolve the issue of the fact that it's in wetlands, though?
We have to do that, I guess, with the building permit process.
Okay, and your job and not ours?
Without, yeah.
Okay. You may have more work to do, even after we finish what we have to do, unfortunately, but, you know, at least that's to get you going on your way here. All right, so I have a motion advertised?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Pam will give you your instructions, because you have to put a sign out, but then we'll see you next month.
Okay.
Okay? All right, item number twenty, Appeal three seven three five, Jastine, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Thank you, Contracting Corp. Jastine Contracting Corp. is requesting a variance to allow a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located in a B one zone at one thirty-one Old Out Fifty-two Stormville and which has not been lived in in over one year to be rebuilt in the same size and same footprint pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-five of the zoning ordinance. All right, good evening, can you help us through what you're trying to do? Why was, why has the house not been lived in?
Uh, the gentleman that had lived in it had passed away and then his daughter moved into the house, and then we bought the house from the daughter. From the family, from the-
After she had moved out, though?
Right.
Okay, so.
So there's not been any-
How old is the house?
Uh, the exact year that it was built, I don't recall, I mean, the building upon the-
I mean, you're looking to tear it down?
Yeah.
Or just to rehab it?
Uh, no, we were going to take it down, because it was just, the, the roof is rotted, it's caving in.
So you're going to bring it down to the foundation?
Yes.
But you're keeping the foundation, you're not expanding the footprint?
Yes, correct.
Okay, one-story, two-story?
It's a two-story.
It says one-story framed dwelling.
It's a two-story.
It's a mistake in the, in the old life, or, yeah, so the house is about at least a hundred years old.
It says that it's one story.
Yeah, it says one story.
I mean, unless-
Where do, where do you see it now?
I'm just doing a family.
I think I'm on the right application.
No.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Thirty-seven thirty-five says one-story framed dwelling, one-story enclosed porch.
It's one and a half story.
Yeah, I can see why you want to tear that down.
The roof line comes down to the top of the window.
Oh, I see, the, um, the surveyor put the-
Yeah.
He shouldn't put two-story frame in there.
That's a mistake, we'll have the surveyor change it. Passes clearly two stories, full set of stairs.
When was the survey done?
Just recently, that, that survey.
Yeah, within the last year, I hired, um, Linkland surveyors to do the survey.
Now, what's up with the shed in the back? Do we have to clean that up?
That predates, everything on that survey predated zoning.
So we should clean it up while we're at it?
Oh, the variance, sure.
Yeah.
Can you get the dimensions of the one-story frame shed in the back? How far is it from the property line?
It's not written on your survey here.
Yeah.
But we know it's grandfathered in, let's just clean it up.
It is five foot from the right, from the, um-
Yeah, it says it right on the board.
From the southern, uh, I'd say the, uh, how, how do you know?
If you see-
Oh, it says five foot one northwest?
And then the other one says two point four.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it needs-
It's in the northwest, that's, you know, it's-
It's five foot one-
That's the north, the north.
In, so it needs a twenty-foot variance for the side, right?
Well, I don't know, B one.
Oh, he's in a B one.
Technically, you don't have to clean up the setbacks, because it has, it didn't set back, but, right?
I just do it and clean it up and-
We can look in-
What are the neighboring property uses? What's next door?
All residential, single.
All residential, so this is an anomaly-
Exactly.
Why this is zoned for business, then, if everything else around it is a residential use?
Well, it's probably-
The neighbors, and then-
Probably all the houses were built before zoning was done.
And then the neighbors all born and shed that's fallen down.
See, all those houses were built before zoning was done and then they-
Really?
It's a business.
The actual house and the neighborhood houses.
Okay.
And there's the house to the-
I think they put Route Fifty-two-
It's definitely a residential use next door.
This is all-
The neighbors might object if we, if we returned to do a business use.
This house was-
So we can see this picture?
Well, property lines used to go to the middle of the-
No, this is past the border.
No, I don't think it is.
Oh, yeah, this is definitely two stories, but Mary tells a story about our actual-
Well, as he said, yeah, but he used to go to the middle of the south.
Mary, can we borrow you for one second?
Middle of the south, it used to go to the south.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
So, um, again, um, if you can have the surveyor go back and fix this problem, about one story or two story?
This is a two-story house.
Yeah, I can give Eric a call.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because this is just the porch.
Okay, all right, good. So, have your surveyor correct, though, it's not a one-story?
They'll care of that.
They'll fix that? Okay. Motion advertised?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Pam, we'll give you the instructions for your sign.
Okay.
And then we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Pam, there's pictures for the- Item number twenty-one, Appeal three seven three six. Can somebody pronounce that for me?
Chietro.
Chietro, thank you. Lisa Chietro, seven, Fenor?
Fenor Court, yes.
Court, okay. Hopeful Junction is requesting a twenty-five-foot rear line and an eleven-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed and a twenty-three-foot rear line variance for an existing swing set pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, I'm going to first start by asking, where is Fenor Court?
Um, it is off of eighty-two, across from the old fish market.
Top of the-
Oh, okay, all right, down that way, okay.
Yes.
That's fine, no problem.
Okay.
Okay, so you're, first time we're seeing your application, if you could just tell us what you are looking to do.
Um, we actually have the shed and the swing set already on the property and I did bring a picture for you to see it, um, we're just looking for the variance because-
Did you put up the shed and the swing set?
Um, yes, but years ago.
How many years ago?
My son was three, he's going to be twelve, so nine years ago.
Okay.
Yes. And to be honest, we bought the house, we were first-time homeowners, we didn't know anything about setbacks, opens like that. We just recently put in a pool and that's when we found out that we were not in compliance with the variance.
There was a pool in the side yard?
That's allowed.
Okay.
Sheds are the only thing that are allowed.
And the pool meets the various, the setbacks?
Well, I don't know about that, the patio on the side and, I don't know, because it's not showing a dimension.
It should be, because we did have the survey redone.
Yeah, she says fence and patio, twenty-six point two.
That's for the rear yard, though.
Huh?
Isn't that for the rear yard? Or is that the side yard?
Yeah, but for the fence and patio, if that's twenty-six point two, that space?
I'm talking about the patio to here.
Well, it says twenty-six.
No, no, I know, but if you look and take the measurement from the other side, what's twenty-six measured to the fence and, to the fence and patio? You have almost that amount getting to that other corner. So it's going to be at least the fifteen feet that they need. I, I'm okay with that, that looks-
Okay.
And you're, you're definitely going to have that measure, that twenty-six feet, you're[1530.77] And you're definitely going to have that measured, that twenty-six feet, you're going to have that to the pool. So that, that looks like that's okay. Okay, so then you have a wood swing set, okay, that's the shed and the swing set there.
And I have a picture just to show you, to show you that it's enclosed, we've got trees and...
And why can't it be moved? It's on wooden pallets.
In front of the shed is the pantry that we put in that has a double door. Open certain woodshed door, it will be...
Where's your septic?
In the front block of the house.
Okay. Is this your deck right here?
Yes, it is.
All right, so you don't have a whole lot of... This is a small lot, what's the size of your lot?
One six six.
Okay, so it's, you have less than an acre, that's, that's part of the... And this is full screening over here? These are all varieties or whatever these are?
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like it's hidden from your neighbors, anyway.
Yes.
Is the white fence is your rear line, that, so you have a neighbor behind you?
Yes, the white fence is actually there, because always used to chain them.
Okay, and how close is your neighbor's house behind you? Actually, you can go back to the microphone, just so that way... You have a very soft voice, so... I want to make sure we pick it up.
His house to the fence, you mean, or...
His, well, in relation to the fence, yeah, how close is his house going to be?
I honestly couldn't tell you.
Which one is there, that or here?
I would say it's further, their house to the fence is further than our house to the fence.
That's what I was just going to ask you, if you can do it that way.
Yes.
Okay, it's back here, I've got it, I've got it. That's the neighbor I was trying to... Okay, so this neighbor you've got screening, this neighbor you've got... Do they also have trees on the other side of their fence?
They have forest, yes.
Okay, all right, so...
Forest.
Are we okay with this?
No, I'm okay.
Doing a public survey?
More than two other days.
Second.
One favor?
Hi.
Pam, we'll give you your instructions for your sign, can you keep this for the bio?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And we'll see you next month.
Another pool, I know.
All right. We're getting there. Item number twenty-two, appeal three seven three seven, Desiderio? Okay. Laura A. Desiderio, Eight Galately Drive, Bobbinger's Falls, represented by Jennifer Lucas, registered architect, is requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for an existing above-ground pool, a sixteen-foot sideline variance for an existing pool deck, and an eight-eleven-foot sideline variance for proposed cover deck pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-four, one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. When were these put in? The, um... And did the current owner put them in? Has the current owner put in the both decks, both existing decks? I think there is a, is there a CO for the...
The desk?
Not for the desks, because there was a... When I was in the planning board dropping off, they had a notice of improvement for both desks, both decks. Okay. The pool, they do not have, I called the building department, they do not have a building permit for the pool. They have no permits for any of this.
The only permit we have is for the, the house.
The house, okay. As far as I know, the, the decks and the pool were put in back in nineteen eighty-five. That's what the homeowners had told me. When did the homeowners purchase this house?
The house was built in nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah, so I... Are they the original owners? I don't know for sure. Okay. The, the reason why this has spurred this... The variances for the existing decks is that we were proposing to put in a, a new deck that required a side yard clearance. Okay. There are retaining walls on here? Are you proposing them or they exist? Those are existing retaining walls. And how tall are they? Two feet tall, maybe? Maybe, or approximately? Approximately. They're not exceeding four feet? No. Okay. And I can double check that when I'm on site. There's a patio pergola? Do we have a setback measurement for that? I scaled it off of the drawing to be approximately twenty-five feet. I would need to get the surveyor to get me the distinct dimensions. So how old is, we think this pool is thirty years old? Um, my client said that they had someone install it in nineteen eighty-five. Okay. With the, with the existing decks. And so, but they're looking to keep it? It's thirty years old, and they're still looking to keep it? Like they're not ready to tear it down or something? No. No. The, the property line is irregular, if you look, the, the angle is not ninety degrees, the side yard, the, the side property line is askew, and if the side yard property line was in fact perpendicular to the front yard property line, we would be more than okay with side yard setbacks. That doesn't buy you a whole lot... Doesn't buy a whole lot of sympathy, at least. It looks like they've got issues with this biography in the back, though, so their ability to put this in the backyard is... Yeah, there's, there's a... I mean, these are five-foot contours, so... Yes, there's a, there's a significant slope in the back, there's also an existing septic system, and the well is located on the other side. The septic tank is located directly off the opposite side of the existing, as well as the proposed addition and cover deck. So they, they do have many constraints on the property. Okay, so what are they, are they looking to do some improvements now? What are they looking to improve now? That's what originally got us here. Okay. What, the, if, actually, if on A1, there is the existing wood deck that's shown with the existing kitchen, and then on A2, it illustrates the proposed addition with the proposed deck, as well as covered area on that deck. On the site plan, there's a letter hatch showing the existing deck, and then the darker hatch around it would be the improvement. Is there screening so you don't see this pool from the street? No, there's not. Oh, you can see it? My clients have spoken to both neighbors on either side, and they are completely agreeing. They have no problems with us moving forward if, if we are able to. And the owners were under the impression that they did not need a permit for the pool, so who never installed it, I, you know, I don't know. Well, but back in nineteen eighty-five, they might not have needed it.
Oh, they did.
Well, that's when the law changed.
Seventy-two, one, they needed a permit.
No, not need a permit, needed a, the variant, needed the ten-foot versus the twenty-five feet.
Right, eighty-five.
Right, they might have got it right under the wire in terms of the ten feet.
It still would have required a permit.
But still, let's, let's clean that up now, okay? Yeah, we, she, the owner would like to make sure everything is up to snuff.
Jim, and look at the survey, or maybe survey different?
There's a, there's a certified survey by the surveyor, and then there's a site plan. That is, is my site plan, that's taken the information from the survey.
Yeah, the hand, it's handwritten, seventeen feet for the pool. That doesn't make sense if it's only nine feet to the deck and then fourteen feet to the corner of the proposed deck, whatever that's going to be. Because those measurements are about the same or bigger. There's nothing on the certified site plan which says how far the pool is away.
So are these your measurements, or these are an actual surveyor's measurements to the pool and to the deck? Those are my measurements. Oh, okay. If you, if you would like us to amend, yes.
We need to know how far the pool is.
Yeah, I think we need to be clear. So we'll have the, the surveyor get a certain update to their survey? Yeah, not a problem.
What do you say that's changed in oh one? Oh, oh one?
Oh, oh one, wow.
What was I thinking?
Yeah, we've always said eighty-five.
Yeah, I didn't think it was, I thought it was a little bit now.
I'm sorry, I missed that. The pool setback changed in two thousand and one. Okay. From ten feet to twenty-five feet.
I think I was almost around when it changed.
Uh-oh.
Also, do you want the surveyor to plot the addition on? Because she's saying it's fourteen feet, but would... Should the surveyor plot that? Because you're going to need to give the variance for that also.
Right.
So I'd have the surveyor also do all the measurements for each corners.
Okay.
Well, then we have to wait for her to come back to advertise?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But also, the front setback shows forty-eight feet, one inch to the existing house, so that has to be cleaned up, too.
Oh, that's right.
I don't know how that happened.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, you're right.
They weren't strict back then. The existing house, you've got a variance in the back.
All right, you really need a survey. We have the survey, but we need an update. We need an update to the survey.
But also, because that's going to...
Yeah, because it appears even, not even the house is in there. Okay. So can you give me a list of what you would like from the survey? Any structure that's on the property should be labeled to the distance to its property line.
And proposed new structure.
Right, and then the proposed addition that you're going to do.
Structures in the setbacks.
We don't see any sheds on here, but if there's any other structures on the property...
There's not a survey.
They have to be labeled. It was just done. It was, um, I have a copy back in. There are copies that were given in the application. Yeah, but if this is what was just done, it doesn't give us the dimensions to the pergola and the fat patio. And now you've got it, it does give us the pool. So now you've got to add in the other, the proposed work that you're looking to do. Yeah, got in. All right. And to you, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number twenty-three, appeal three seven three eight, San...
Santa Riga.
Santa Riga.
Santa Riga, thank you. Dominic Santa Riga, twenty-eight Mountain Pass Road, Hobart Junction, is requesting a twenty-five-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by eleven-foot open wood shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
How are you? To advertise.
Okay, so you have, uh, did you build this?
Yes, I did.
About how long ago?
Approximately between ninety-three and ninety-five.
Oh, so it's been there for twenty years?
Been there for twenty years.
And your neighbors haven't objected to it?
My neighbor was actually going to come with me. I believe Pam, if that's her name, said...
Not this...
It's not important, this one, you can come on the night, he'll give me a motorized letter or whatever. And I also, I don't know if you understood my, my description of where I tried to say it was, but I brought pictures in my phone to further show you. It's really the only place on my piece of property to put... This shed is for my firewood.
Okay.
And it's, it's really the only place it could possibly be. If I try to go back anymore, I'm going to be floating with my, my septic fields. I, I can't come up anymore because I have to stay behind the home. And it's been there a patch of woods that is about fifty-five feet wide, about fifty-four feet wide.
So it's not visible to your neighbors?
I have the pictures, and, and it's not even blinged yet, the woods, and you can't see it. And this patch of woods has been there since the development, since nineteen seventy. It's just, and, and what happened was, the prior people to me, and the same people at that time, brought flooring to, to level off the backyards.
Okay.
But they never touched the woods.
Okay.
So they're so, they can't do anything with it. Like, off my property where it's grass, and then the woods begins, it just dives down. And it's just vines and thorns and broken trees and...
So you, so you don't see it from the road, either?
No.
Okay.
Would you like to see?
Sure.
Let me do this.
Let's see the pictures. It looks like he's taking our picture.
Now, you can start. Start from here. Which way am I going here? Okay, you can go, this, this, where I broke it into the woods.
Okay. Can you see?
Yeah.
That's my...
Long way.
Wrong way, broke it into the woods. That's, um, okay, so that's from one side.
That's what I would see if I was coming up your driveway?
If.
This side?
No.
Is this white fence on your neighbor's property or your property?
My property.
And it's on the...
I'm going to show you that one. This is from looking at straight in from my backyard.
What's the foundation?
It's just sitting on, on the...
Concrete.
No, no, concrete, big giant heavy construction woods, like eight by twelve.
Okay.
Woodwork and drillics.
I think you've got us convinced.
That's, if you're in the street looking in, that's what you see from the street.
Okay, so it's your nice white fence.
And this puts you right here.
That's four feet and not six feet?
This is the very corner of my neighbor's fence for his pool and his home in his backyard.
Okay.
This is the patch of woods that's going to go away now. Go away, I mean, this is the patch of woods, and my tool shed is...
I'm starting to think I'm going to get poison ivy soon.
That's what I put it into.
We're good. All right, let's talk about, is this pool for a second here?
Yes.
You have a pool on your property?
Yes.
Where's, where's the pool? It's not showing up on your survey.
The pool is on the other side of the house, which I'm glad that came up because we're getting, we're getting a permit, a CO for a tool shed. And we always thought we had the CO for the pool, and, and when Art came out to give us the CO for the tool shed, he said reopen for the pool. In other words, we just had the electrical inspection for the pool.
When would this pool go in?
Nineteen ninety-three, Jack Kine was supposed to handle all that, and he did. He's the one that came and filed for the permit, which is on record.
Never got an electrical inspection?
No, we got that, that's on file, but me not knowing...
You never...
When they said you don't have a CO for the pool, I said, I came right down here and I said, "I specifically remember the electrical inspection," and she said, "No, we have that." You didn't close the CO on the pool.
Expired ninety-four.
And we didn't know it to this day.
Okay.
So I reapplied to have that done, but that was put in in nineteen ninety-three. That's on the other side. I cleared woods to put that in, because, because the rest of my backyard was the septic fields.
It was ninety. Yeah, it's not on your survey, so we're concerned about where is it?
No, I have a survey that's...
I don't know. Well, well, do you have a survey of my home here? No, you don't do this.
Well, all we have is, somebody drew a lot of stuff in on here.
Yeah, well, here's my, here's my home right here, right?
Right, right, here's your shed.
Yeah, that's...
So you're saying the pool is over here?
I'm saying the pool is over here, right here, right off the, right this way, and it's eighteen feet off the line, and it's eighteen by thirty-six inch wide.
Okay, but if he did it in nineteen ninety-four, then he'd be okay.
Is there a patio?
Yeah, is there a patio around the pool?
Yes, there is.
How big? On, on this side, on your property side?
On this side, on this side is four feet of walkway.
Okay.
And fourteen more feet to the line, so...
So you're almost to your property line?
Well, I'm eighteen, well, well, I'm eighteen...
Eight to the line, so he needs a one-foot variance for that. But do you want it plotted on the survey?
I thought you said you only need a ten feet.
Not for the patio.
No, the patio needs fifteen.
It doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
A lot of things in the code told it.
Because he's, he's saying that the pool is fifteen feet away, and then there's, the patio is fourteen feet wide.
The actual pool was eighteen feet away.
Right.
And I have a four-foot walkway.
On, on this side, too?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, I thought you said a fourteen-foot side, patio on this side.
A four-foot walkway.
Leaving fourteen.
So all these fourteen feet, he's an inch or so shy. Let's clean it up.
Yeah, doesn't make sense, though, does it?
Do you need additional dimensions?
Yeah, we need the dimensions on, on something. You've got a lot going on here, so we need the dimensions on here.
The shed, too.
You've got to tell us where this pool is. And we've got to be absolutely certain where that pool is.
I'll be doing a survey for everything. Clean it up in one go. That's the fastest and easiest way. Where do you want the survey?
Do you know when the last time you had a survey done on your property was?
Uh, I don't know. We're, we're actually in contract with selling our home, and the, and the people are looking for a June thirtieth closing, so... That might murder you. I mean, all, all these years...
Um, we don't, I mean, we're just taking what you're writing, where that pool is, and where your property line is. It's not even drawn in on here yet.
How do you know it's eighteen feet away?
Because I measured that.
How do you know where your property line is?
Because I know where my, I don't know, because I know where my property line is.
Do you have pins?
I mean, uh...
Do you have pins?
Well, I can tell you this, it's been here twenty-two years through, through four, four different families. It's never been an issue, four people have come down.
That's not...
So you didn't put the pool in?
Yeah, I put the pool in nineteen ninety-three. I, I'm there since nineteen eighty-nine.
What?
He means his neighbor.
Oh, okay.
Through four different neighbors, it's never been an issue, I mean...
We had a case recently where the neighbors thought the property line was...
Right, was...
And the pool ended up on the other side.
Right, well, basically, your neighbor, I mean, the person who's buying the house should be getting a survey done, right?
I have no idea.
The bank is going to require it, right?
I'm the listing agent, I'm his wife, and yes, I would imagine our survey is so old, he's going to have to do another survey.
Right.
But, you know, we don't know when that's going to happen, either. Right now, we're just, we should be expecting a mortgage commitment in the next couple of weeks. The appraisal's been done, contracts are fully executed.
Can you just come to the mic, please?
Oh, yes. Right now, we have fully executed contracts with buyer, the student's mortgage to Homestead, Ross Ritter, and we have the appraisal done, we don't know how it came in, we should know tomorrow, and a mortgage commitment's coming in in two weeks. And a mortgage commitment's coming in two weeks. So I would imagine that they would absolutely make him do an updated survey, okay? I haven't heard that. I can call Ross Ritter tomorrow and find that out. I mean, I...
Tell the attorney, the who?
Barbara Hambaz, the attorney, yeah.
Of the situation. I said, "Just so you know, my pool's eighteen feet from my line." And he said, "When did you put it in?" I said, "In nineteen ninety-three." And he seemed to... He said, "Look, that's grand..."
It's a pool we're not necessarily worried about. It's the patio. The patio is the concrete surround.
Really, not a patio. It's a wall. So you walk around the pool.
That makes sense. It's really part of the pool. It only needs to be ten feet away.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's a surround.
Excuse me?
It's a pitting suns or bricks?
It's concrete.
It's concrete.
Board concrete.
It's board concrete. So it's... You know, so the other side of the pool where all my property is, is the patio part. That's why.
That's what I'm saying. Is the concrete part of this?
You can have a pool without anything along the outside of it.
Not an ingrown pool.
Sure you can. It's not cool. I mean, you get lots of rants in your pool, but... Sorry, I used to have a house that had no patio around the pool. Any fish go.
I haven't really seen it, but I've seen it.
Um, you know, I'm telling you, it happens.
So I think the best thing is to get a survey done urgently.
Yeah, you gotta get the survey done.
Speak to Barbara.
You see, at the moment, we can't afford to do a survey. That's why we're selling the house. So we can't afford to pay for our own survey right now.
Speak to Mr. Raham about what the problem is. Maybe you could go in on the cost of the survey for the guys getting it done to do a rush survey.
What's the group's today?
For one foot?
It's not on here.
We do not know the damage.
We don't understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, that we do not have a current survey that shows the pool period, is what you're saying.
The patio, right?
Or the surround, yes.
And so when they do the municipal search for the title, they could come up finding issues, and then you're not gonna call us.
No, I know that, and I'm aware of that.
That's what we're trying to do, is to clean it up right now.
Just to Mr. Raham.
The pool is far enough... Your pump is far enough off the line, isn't it?
I don't...
We'll have to measure it.
Other end of the pool... No, I don't know if it's further off the line. It's...
Well, it's beyond the surround, so that's eighteen...
Well, if you're correct, and it's eighteen feet away, the pool's on the line.
Okay, but we have to do that.
Patios have to be fifteen feet away. So again, you might get your survey, and you may find that you're wrong, and it's more than fifteen feet away, and you're all set. Or you may find out you're wrong, and you're only ten feet away from it. So you need a bigger variance. Yeah, so we don't know whether it's one feet or five feet. So again, speak to Mr. Raham, but he's a good attorney. Tell him what the situation is, and he could probably... If the other person had already contracted to have the property surveyed, you could probably get a rush on it. And then reimburse, you give the seller... You don't have the money for it. You give this seller... Not the seller, the proprietor credit at the time of the...
Yeah, I'll speak with Ross Ritter. See when that survey's gonna be done for the buyer anyway, so we'll have it in time tonight.
Or if we end up needing a variance for the pool for whatever reason, how soon can that be done?
If you come back to us in June with the information? We're scheduled for July. The July closing is supposed to be here. The second Tuesday in July.
I mean, I'm willing to... Again, you're looking at the situation. I'm willing to go and have it advertised, subject to you having it done before... What's the deadline to have it done?
Now, that would be really nice.
Yeah, and again, what's the deadline to get the survey? Like, May fourth? Like, a couple of weeks?
I have to do a survey.
Seven fifty hours.
It's an update.
Give me an update, yeah.
For an update, yeah.
He's done the fieldwork.
Yeah, everything's been done.
See, that would be great if they could advertise it.
It's twenty-five days.
I have an existing survey from when we bought the house, which... I have an existing survey from when we bought the house.
So I don't know what to do with this.
But if you would be willing to advertise it, and then we could get the survey before the night comes.
They have to be able to advertise by Friday. We're not gonna have the information by Friday. We can't do this.
Okay, but what we can do is we can ask for X amount for a bigger amount, and then reduce it at public hearing. So...
Awesome possibility, but...
I mean, yeah, so you can ask for a ten-foot variance, and then at that time, we cut it down to four feet, whatever we need to. I mean, I know we're under pressure, so...
Yeah, unfortunately, we're under a lot of...
So if you're willing to work with us, I think you should try to... You know, it's been there for twenty years.
I don't know that they're gonna get a survey in time. I don't know.
If you don't, then it goes into July.
When you say in time, what are we talking about? By June ninth?
Well, sooner than that.
Oh, sooner. So give me a deadline of some sort today. I know what day.
Friday at fifteen.
I'm sorry? I don't know if I can get a survey drawn up that quick.
Again, so you've got two... I mean, multiple issues. The first is, if you can get it done by Friday, we are going for it. Other thing is, we ask for a bigger variance when we advertise, and then when you bring the survey in, we cut it down to what you need.
Okay.
So then that will give you almost three more weeks to get your survey done for the public hearing.
And then you...
And then it'll be done the same day, I mean, and we'll be doing...
And then we come back with the survey on the ninth and...
We're setting a precedent and doing it. That's what I'm worried about.
It's an exceptional situation.
I appreciate that. I wanna thank you for saying that. It is an exceptional situation. I don't wanna scare my... I don't want the buyer to say, "I don't wanna get involved in any of this," and lose my buyer.
It's possible.
Yeah, and in today's market, there's far few buyers...
We got any decision on this, guys?
Again, the market... That's a county not all that hot, so... I mean, I do... That's why I'm willing to work with the town people right now.
So what amount are you saying we should be advertising for? I'm just... I know, it's not on here at all. I mean, that's the problem.
We can only go by what he's saying, and then say five feet or something.
Does the building department have any information at all?
I would have to go look. I don't have that with me here to find out what they said.
You don't have any pins for the corner of your block?
For what they say on there...
Not that we can identify in the woods.
I need to... They didn't have a survey. I don't know.
Who drew it on the survey? Do you have any?
Is that your drawing? I'm right into it.
Who made the operations on the survey?
That's my drawings. I know going over the survey with our board, the marker in the front is the telephone pole. That doesn't move on that side of the house.
Maybe, maybe not.
Maybe he does.
An artist's schedule to come out to look at the pool.
He was talking about pool up here. That's what he's...
And the pool is not right on the corner anyways.
Yeah.
Looks like Mr. Belikas did your survey. He's a local guy.
Who?
Mr. Belikas.
Does he write names down?
Mr. Raham knows him. Share space here.
Yeah, speak to Bob and say, "You gotta take care of this yesterday." He could probably address it for you.
Well, if he were to file for that for that ten-foot variance, I'm sure, and then knock it down to whatever it only has to be.
I'm sorry, do you have any...
Like you were saying, that would work.
You wanna give him a...
And we'll get on this right away too.
Oh, yeah.
You have to.
I think you'd be so kind to spell that.
The true shed is definitely...
Your attorney notes it.
I absolutely know my true shed has enough of everything. It'll all be out tomorrow.
But this shed that you're even asking us to consider, we don't even... We're just out of your word for what you're saying it is.
It could be on your neighbor's property for all we know.
We need a survey, guys.
Yeah, I do.
That's a downgraded survey.
No, no, this one. We talked about this survey. I mean, this shed.
My shed that I'm asking for, that I'm here for originally. Yeah, well, that's where it sits on my properties.
It could be on your neighbor's property. You have no idea.
Okay. Is it really... Is it two weeks delay? If I'm meeting in July, it's July fourteenth. A two-week delay is...
Well, you know, that'd scare my buyer away. I mean, he has to get in. I mean, you know, that was what we signed contracts for. You know, that was his date.
The delays happen...
I know that. I know that title people delay things and interns delay things.
The date in the contract is what?
Excuse me?
The date in the contract is what?
To close?
Yeah.
On or before June thirtieth?
Then unless time went may of the essence,